This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I just really want to extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just want to ask you right now if you would go ahead and turn off your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. And really, again, just really want to say we really appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Okay, up on our agenda is public comments, and I believe we have three people signed up for comments. The board encourages comments about open meeting agenda items from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with board procedures will do so in accordance with law, board policy, and board rules. The board asks that each participant comments pertain to the agenda item under consideration. Unless adjusted by the presiding officer, comments by speaker will be no longer than three minutes per time limit from District B E D Local. I will ask that the board secretary, Mr. Davis, be our timekeeper. Mr. Davis, if you would just let the patron addressing the board know when they have one minute left and when they've reached the end of their allotted time to speak. Great. Okay, first person up is Allison Moss.
Hello, my name is Allison Moss, and I am a teacher and a parent at Waco ISD, and I am talking about Agenda Item Number 12, about Calver, Tennyson, all the schools. I am a teacher at Calver, and I have been for, this is my fifth year at Calver, fourth year in the classroom, fourth year in the classroom. And I fiercely protect my home life, and so I haven't been to a school board meeting. I watch them sometimes. But because I feel like this agenda item could impact the fact that I have a home life and that I'm safe enough to go home and that my kid is safe enough to come home, I'm going to speak about, and I want to hear, I'll be watching this because we have to go home and prep for tomorrow, but I want to know, like, the thought process of the windows, of the plan. There's a lot of talk about multimillion-dollar schools and state-of-the-art, and as a teacher, I just want a school that works, that has enough square footage per student. I'm a science teacher. We've never been up to code for enough square footage for students per lab in a classroom. And so to me, that's state-of-the-art, showing students this is how this works, having sinks that work when we need them to, having access to the gas things when we want to do cool experiments, things like that. And so I just want to know, like, where those thoughts came of needing these types of things. From my perspective, it seems like an aesthetic need, an aesthetic ask versus a need of our students and our families, and I wonder if there's money in the budget that could be better served elsewhere for the teachers, for the students, for our support staff, having enough offices for our, hopefully, we're going to get more counselors, for restorative practice people, for home ec, you know, so we can teach our kids some of these life skills. And I just haven't seen a lot of that in the plans. There's also been a lot of talk about, like, community outreach of asking teachers and community partners, like, what we wanted, and I feel like I'm pretty involved, and I haven't heard anything about it. I just, like, saw the plans.
One minute.
Oh, thanks. I just saw the plans, and so I just want to know those types of things and if you guys are really taking those things, like, super seriously, because as a teacher, some of those big changes just doesn't even seem like it would reflect well for our students, for a safe learning environment, for a safe environment, like, both physically safe but also just for things that take place in the hallway, for when we take a student outside, everyone's going to be able to see that. Like, there's lots of elements on the ground that would be impacted by some of these plans. And then also, have we looked outside of schools that we maybe are familiar with to see what do schools look like that work? What are schools that look well? And not just at schools that we might be familiar with or that we came from. And those are my, those are my things, and I just want to make sure that it's a school that we can, we can be proud of, and I'm excited to be able to go back to Calver. It's one of my favorite places in Waco, but I want to make sure it's a school that will be able to last for a long time and that we won't have to end up paying for curtains.
Thank you, Mrs. Moss. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the Norman Manning. Norman Manning?
Good evening. My name is Norman Manning. I've served for 12 years sitting up there, so I understand the position you guys are in. I'm here to talk about the possible design. The academic neighborhood classroom is not meant for, excuse me, I got to put my glasses on, getting old. It's not designed for our students or teachers in WISD. First of all, possible distractions from another room, say a child getting ill or a teacher getting ill, everyone would be distracted. From the information I received, the design is floor-to-ceiling glass walls and doors to all classrooms. Even if it was bulletproof, I would not support the design. My question is, would that glass stop an AR-15 bullet? Are you trustees willing to go to a funeral of students and teachers after an active shooter? The trauma from such an event will have an everlasting effect on surviving teachers and students. If you don't believe me, go visit your local VA and talk to Vietnam-era veterans or Korea veterans. They were trained and taught to fight, and they still have nightmares. I read a story on the Ellen Net the other day about a traumatic event that happened to a six-year-old. He and his mother was on a flight, sitting behind a man who was watching a movie on his personal device. The movie was Deadpool. I don't really know about the movie, but have heard it is a violent one. Somehow, the kid got into a position where he could see the movie also. In a part of the movie, the main character was blown in half. The kid started screaming and crying. Now, his mother is complaining about the somatic effect that had on him from a movie. Let's fast forward, Waco High or Calver. We have an active shooter, glass walls. You know there would be at least one nosy student will be trying to see what is going on.
One minute.
And also, they will not follow the instructions been given by staff. So now, we have at least one student and teacher who have seen a violent act, and how long will it take them to mentally, physically get over this? The Vietnam conflict been over since 1975. Let me take a quote from the Board of Ethics. I went and read your policies. "I will be continuously guided by what is best for all students of the district, and may I add, including teachers and staff." Unfortunately, I can't stay. I got to be on the road at 5:00 in the morning, but hey, y'all do what's supposed to be right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And next, so sorry, just want to remind audience for guests that we have children, young children in the room, and to be cognizant of that as we speak. Next, our comment for guests is the Honorable Commissioner Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Y'all can say good evening back to the.
Good evening.
(laughter) I want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak. My name is Patricia Miller, and I do live and reside in Waco ISD District 2. My district representative is Stephanie Cardewig, and I want to say congratulations on your ascension to board president. Haven't had a chance to do that. And real quick, I hope that's not in my time, trustee, but I'm here speaking to the interior glass walls design. Thomas Jefferson, our third president of our United States of America, said, "The care of human life and happiness is the first and only legitimate objective of good government." And as public elected officials charged with delivering good governance to our community as it relates to the Waco Independent School District, I stand this evening to encourage you to do just that. As Waco ISD School Board Trustees, your main function, and this is according to your state association, TASB, the Texas Association of School Boards, is to provide local citizen governance and oversight of this school district. Your responsibilities are to adopt goals and priorities and monitor the district's success to adopt policies and review those policies for effectiveness, to hire and evaluate the superintendent, to adopt a budget and set a tax rate, and last but not least, to communicate with the community. In fact, as you serve as an advocate for public schools, one of the key things trustees should do is to listen to their community, and that is a direct quote from the TASB website. It goes on to say, "Because it is one of the best ways for trustees to build trust between the district and the community." As members of the board, many of you came into the community asking for support for the now $355 million bond issue. You cited it would be used for construction and rehab of some of the schools in the district. And in the middle of a pandemic and the beginning of cost increases, this community approved your bond issue because we wanted schools equal in quality to the schools in our surrounding districts. I would not think, as a community, that we would need to come before our advocacy group and lobby you to keep our children safe. That ideal should be universal among all board members. The safety of our children should be paramount, and you all should be united on that. Racial, gender, ethnic, nor religious differences should stand in your opposition of all of you being united in the goal of keeping our children as safe as possible. Nothing should supersede you from working as a cohesive group on behalf of the safety of our children. I understand you have visited with experts in the field of school safety. I will not labor that point. I will say this, you board members, you have been charged with oversight of this district. You have been charged with protecting the trust of this community. You should hear the community tonight and do what we ask. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do right." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. I believe we have one more audience for guests. The Honorable Judge Lee.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Dr. King Can. I first want to, you know, commend you for your service. Being an elected official, I'm quite sure it's a task that many, many don't take into consideration. I stand today to support my community. I represent Justice of the Peace Precinct 2, but not only am I here for Justice of the Peace Precinct 2, I am here for McLennan County and all kids that will be attending these schools that are being affected by the changes that you make today. It's important that you either look at yourselves and ask yourself, decisions you make today, will you be able to answer the questions tomorrow? And that's, that's what you have to do. That's what I do on a day-to-day basis. I affect people's lives, and that's what you're doing. The next issue that I want to bring to your attention is administrative changes that you've made that are going to impact more lives outside of the safety of these kids. Administratively, you've done away with the Attendance Court Liaisons for Waco ISD. As you know, the Attendance Court Liaisons are the ones who are in charge of filing the cases. I know I've got three minutes.
Yes, it's, a comment is for the agenda items specifically, and Court Liaison is not on our agenda, but you can talk.
Public comment was public comment, last time I checked.
Well, the policy update, I don't know if I have it here. Let me see. Monica, can you give me the policy update? I want you to have three minutes to speak about the agenda item with which you would like to speak. There is a policy, and I would love to read it to you. It was on a sign-in sheet that says, basically, in just, to speak on agenda items that are posted.
With that being said, no need to go any further. For the record, we all know what's been done, and I've already contacted the administrative office or the person that's in charge of that, and hopefully, you all will do what you need to do to rectify those issues that will be present going forward. As it pertains to the kids, like I said, you yourself, Stephanie Cardewig, trustee, came to the Neighborhood Association meeting, and you yourself brought to the attention that, hey, this is what we are proposing. But no one from this board has come to us with a final prior to it being posted on the agenda, is what I was about to say. I do believe that if you would have come to us as a community like you came to us with the request to increase our taxes, you would have had the, that you do today, and I'm quite sure that they wouldn't have wanted you to vote the way you voted. So I ask that you do what you need to do to make the amendments, or even if you have to put it back on the agenda to make some changes, because, again, what we have in place right now is not going to protect these kids. From what I was told, it's going to be glassed, and it's not going to be bulletproof. It's shatter, but not bulletproof. And correct me if I'm wrong, when you do get to that topic, you're going to put up shades, and the shades are there to, I suppose, this cause the, take away the distractions that may take place if a disturbance comes into place. The last issue that I want to bring to your attention is something that I've brought many times before. We always focus on the ones that are coming out from the inside in, and I also want you to consider those that are already in that may harm not only the kids, but those that are within those doors. So I think my time is up. I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Judge Lee. Just for your information, it is in B E D Local. I know you're very versed in policy. Okay, thank you so much. Sorry, I've got lots of papers here. The next item is our Moment of Silence. So please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, and meditation. Thank you, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So cute. If the board members would meet me in the front of the dais for our special recognition.
Thank you, Madam President and trustees. Tonight, we're going to start our special recognitions with our pledge leaders. Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance during the regular business meeting of the Waco Board of Trustees. For the month of August, Rachel Maxil and Nehemiah Benz from Mountain View Elementary School were selected for this honor. Thank you to Mountain View Elementary Principal Carrie Detlivston for accompanying your students tonight. Rachel's in fifth grade, and her favorite subject is math. She plays volleyball, sings in the choir, plays the piano, and her hobbies include drawing and painting. When she grows up, Rachel would like to be a veterinarian. Thank you to her parents, Joletta and Horace Maxil, for sharing your amazing daughter with us. Nehemiah's also in fifth grade, and his favorite subject is reading, and he loves to game and play basketball and football. Thank you to Nehemiah's mom, Melissa Bradford, for sharing your wonderful son with us. Next, we would like to recognize those campuses who attain the No Place for Hate designation. No Place for Hate is a collaborative initiative from the Anti-Defamation League, which provides educators and students with the resources to ensure anti-bias and diversity education are integral part of the school culture. Schools can receive a No Place for Hate designation by building inclusive and safe communities in which respect and equity are the goals where all students can thrive, empowering students, faculty, administration, and family members to take a stand against bias and bullying by incorporating new and existing programs under one powerful message, sending a clear unified message that all students have a place where they belong. At the beginning of 2021-2022 school year, 15 Waco ISD campuses started the process of applying for and stating their intentions to be a No Place for Hate school. Each school formed a coalition of students and staff who developed and implemented at least three school-wide activities during the year. Examples of these activities include donating gloves to the Texas Coalition for the Homeless, participating in Stomp Out Bullying Day, and class discussions on diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. All 15 Waco ISD campuses were designated as No Place for Hate schools for the 2021-2022 school year, and over the summer, each campus received a Resolution of Respect banner, which will be presented to students at a future school-wide ceremony. The 2021-22 No Place for Hate designated campuses are, and we're going to invite the principals to come up with your counselors and your coordinators and everybody who helped make this possible for your campus. Alta Vista Elementary. Brick Avenue Elementary. Cedar Ridge Elementary. Crestview Elementary. Dean Highland Elementary. Hillcrest PDS. Kendrick Elementary. Mountain View Elementary. Parkdale Elementary. Providence Heights Elementary. West Avenue Elementary. Caesar Chavez Middle School. Tennyson Middle School. And University High School. Congratulations on your amazing accomplishments. Next, we would like to recognize Pam Fisher for being appointed to the TEA Teacher Vacancy Task Force. In May 2022, the Texas Education Agency added an additional 24 teachers to the Teacher Vacancy Task Force. During the intensive two-month selection process, TEA received more than 1,500 nominations. The task force will focus on providing guidance, support, and resources to assist schools to locate and retain teachers. We are pleased to recognize Waco ISD's Pam Fisher, who was chosen as a task force member. A teacher at Providence Heights, Ms. Fisher has been with Waco ISD for 28 years and is currently a physical education teacher. Thank you for representing Waco ISD well as you participate in this extremely important endeavor. Next, we have Waco Under 40. The Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce has a The Greater Waker Chamber of Commerce has announced honorees for the 2022 Waco Under 40 recognition. This group of professionals is celebrated as the best from a diverse group of professionals. The Waco Under 40 program aims to recognize up-and-coming leaders who have excelled in their careers and in the community. They positively impact their field but give back to the community as well. Tonight, we would like to recognize Dr. Adishna. Dr. Adishna is a pediatric sports medicine doctor at Ascension Medical Group, Providence's Orthopedics and Sports Medicine. And we are proud to share that Dr. Adishna is also Waco ISD's sports medicine partner. We also recognize Adrian Fajardo, who has been part of the Waco ISD family since 2017. Mr. Fajardo currently works at the South Waco Elementary Campus. And last, but certainly not least, we recognize our outstanding community partner. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students in Waco ISD with the award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme for the 2022-2023 School Year Lead From the Heart and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and our staff. In August, the district is recognizing Mighty Wind Worship Center. This school year, a total of 225 gift cards from Academy were donated to Waco ISD by Mighty Wind Worship Center to Waco ISD elementary campuses. Each card was $50 for a total of $11,250.[736.93][736.93][applause] Mighty Wind Worship Center says that they absolutely love Waco ISD and have always tried to help in any way possible. In the past, they've adopted schools, implemented a Dare to Dream program at various campuses, run a fellowship program for Christian athletes, mentored students, and recently assisted J. H. Heinz Elementary in purchasing school uniforms. Thank you so much for all that you do for Waco ISD.[772.13][772.13][applause] And that concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
We will move on to Item 5, Public Meeting to Discuss the 2022-2023 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. Mrs. Davis?
Cheryl. Well, we're getting to the end. So, tonight, later in the meeting, we will have a couple of agenda items to adopt first the budget and then the proposed tax rate. But prior to doing that, we are required to hold a public meeting to discuss that and give citizens a chance to give us input on that. So, under the Education Code, the superintendent shall prepare or cause to be prepared a budget covering all the proposed expenditures of the district for the following fiscal year. That is required to be done by August 20th. We did that. We presented a proposed budget to you on the 11th of August, and so that we met that criteria. A summary of that proposed budget is also required to be posted on our transparency webpage, and there was a copy of it in that August 11th board meeting of what we had to post. Also, under Texas Property Tax Law, the Texas Constitution, Tax Code, and Education Code embody the concepts of truth and taxation for the district, and they require school districts to comply with certain steps in adopting that tax rate. This is one of those steps. Texas school district tax rates are composed of two parts, the maintenance and operations rate and the interest and sinking rate. The M&amp;O rate basically helps fund all the operating expenses of the district, salaries, utilities, supplies, equipment. And then the INS tax rate pays the principal and interest on voter-approved bond issues to construct or improve school facilities or purchase major equipment such as school buses. Property tax collections through both the M&amp;O and INS tax rates serve as our local match in leveraging state revenue. So, this is what we are required to post for our truth and taxation on the tax rate. We are proposing a maintenance and operations tax rate of $0.9429 per $100 of valuation and a debt service tax rate of .298969 per $100 of valuation. And that will, as I said, will pay our bonded indebtedness. And looking at the proposed budget with last year's budget, the maintenance and operations, there is a 22.39% decrease in the tax rate for debt service with the debt that we've issued from the bond election that was approved last November. We issued $200 million in debt in February. We're getting ready to issue another $75 million. This rate does incorporate some payment on that $75 million. So, there is a 44.1% increase in the debt service rate. So, for total expenditures, 16.57% decrease. The total appraised value and the total taxable value for last year, we had $10.6 billion in total appraised value. For the current year, it's $12.7 billion. We had appraised value of new property last year of $93.8 million. This year, new property totaled $215.9 million for the district. The total taxable value of all property was $6.7 billion last year. This year is $8.1. And the total taxable value of new property was $88.8 million last year, and this year is $202 million. We have bonded indebtedness of $385,660,000. That's the outstanding principle. Looking at these proposed tax rates with last year's tax rates and then what it does with our revenue per student. Again, last year's tax rate was $1,244 for maintenance and operations and .2202 for interest and sinking for a total rate of $1,2446. The rate to maintain the same level of maintenance and operations revenue and pay debt service for the maintenance and operations fund, that was $0.9685. And of course, that would be without any salary increases. That would have been just at the same level of maintenance and operations we had last year. So, no increases for utilities or salaries or benefits or anything. Then for interest and sinking, that rate to maintain would be $0.30978 for a total tax rate of $1,2782. So, our proposed rate, however, for maintenance and operations is $0.9429, and that is driven by the compressed rate that the state requires us to do. And then the interest and sinking rate is proposed at $29,8969. So, that's a total rate of $1,241869, which is less, as you can see, than our rate to maintain would be to maintain our operations from last year and pay debt service. For our local revenue per student and our state revenue per student, last year, we had $6,621 local revenue per student and $5,460 state revenue. To maintain this year, we would have had, with those higher appraised values, it would have been $8,235 in local revenue and $4,576 from the state. With the proposed rate, it'll be $8,523 in local revenue and $4,585 from the state. So, we shift a little bit with the way the tax rate has been set, so we get a little bit more from the state, a little bit less, or a little bit more locally, both. The comparison of the proposed levy with last year's levy on the average residence, the average market value for residences last year was $168,000. This year, that average market value is $216,000. The average taxable value did not change as much because of the increase in the homestead exemption, going from $25,000 to $40,000. So, our average taxable value of residences was $129,900 last year, and this year it'll be $132,300. The last year's rate versus the proposed rate of $100 valuation, again, that was at $1,2446. It's a little bit lower for the proposed rate at $1,241869. The taxes due on the average residence last year then was $1,616. This year will be $1,643. That's an increase of $26.68 for the year. Our voter approval rate, with the calculation that we have to go through that's required by law, we go through calculating our maximum compressed rate first, and then we are allowed to add on pennies that have been previously approved by election, our golden pennies and our copper pennies as we talk about them, and then we add what we need for debt service. That rate comes to the $1,241869. That's what we published. We cannot adopt anything higher than that at this point without going back out and So, this is our property tax rates from 2005 to the present. As you can see, in the last year since we had HB3, the rates have compressed, and our tax rate has consistently gone down, our M&amp;O rate particularly. We do have an increase in the red you see from the debt service because of that increase from the bonded debt. So, this is a summary of the official budget. Our official budget is made up of three funds, the general fund, the child nutrition fund, debt service funds, and then the summary total is just a total of those three together. So, our estimated revenue in general fund is $157.9 million. Our child nutrition fund is $9.9 million, and our debt service fund is $24.9 million. Our appropriations in the general fund do exceed our estimated revenue for next year of $160.3 million. That is a decrease of $2.3 million to the fund balance. We have planned operating transfers of about $1 million. So, that would, if we spend all of that, would decrease our fund balance by about $3.4 million. We had a beginning fund balance in the general fund of $49.2 million. That would leave us with an ending fund balance of $45.8 million. And as I have told the board, I do, we traditionally underspend that by quite a bit, and so there's a good chance that we would probably end up at a break-even position by the end of this coming year. Child nutrition fund, again, we are also drawing down our fund balance. We do have an excess fund balance in the child nutrition fund, and so we are required to draw that down. As I said, the revenues are $9.9 million. We have $10.9 million in appropriations. So, we're looking at drawing that fund down, about $1 million. The beginning fund balance there is $4 million. That would draw it down to just over $3 million. That is still an excess fund balance, so we're probably going to be coming back as we get some projects planned and draw that some more. On debt service fund, the revenues right now are projected to cover the appropriations with the tax rate that we set. So, this is just a picture of what those funds look like by source. As you can see, our general fund makes up 82% of the official budget. Child nutrition fund is 5%, and our debt service fund makes up 13%. When we're looking at revenue source at this point, this is a shift from what we have had in years past because as the district gets richer property-value-wise, you see a shift between our state revenue and our local revenue. At this point in time, our state revenue will make up 34% of our revenue, and federal revenue is 9%, but local revenue makes up 57% of it. Looking at this by major function, in the red are instructional services, which is direct classroom instruction, libraries and curriculum, and staff development is 48% of the budget. The other big pieces will be student support services, make up 14% of that budget. That includes guidance and counseling, social work services, health services, transportation, food services, and extracurricular activities. The other big piece there is our debt services. We just talked about 13%, and then our non-student support services are also 13% of the budget. Non-student support services include plant maintenance and operations, security services, and data processing technology services. General administration is only about 4% of the whole budget. This is a look at our general fund unassigned fund balance. So, at the end of the year, when we have the fund balance set, we will have some funds that are committed for the end of the year. Some funds are not spendable. This part of our fund balance, inventories are not spendable because they're tied up in inventory. And then we have committed funds for projects that may have been started and haven't completed at August 31st or when we might have. We've got some furniture. We've got some vehicles still out there that we have encumbered but have not come in yet. We know they're not coming in by August 31st, and so they are committed in the fund balance. And so this is what is left after you do those things. And it looks like at the end of next year, our unassigned fund balance, as budgeted, would be about 24%. This is what the debt service payments currently look like by series. So, you can see, they drop off here in... They just dropped off in 2024. They will drop off. We've got kind of a high payment coming up in 2023, and then they drop off and they stay pretty steady through 2038, and then they'll drop off again. Now, this is without issuing that $75 million that we're getting ready to sell Tuesday. And once we do that, they'll probably fill in a little bit. Actually, what the underwriters will try to do is fill in and make that even across those years. That's what we have.
So, thank you, Ms. Davis. Pursuant to Texas Education Code 44.004, the board at a meeting called for the purpose of adopting a budget must allow a taxpayer of the district to be present and participate in the meeting. Accordingly, at this time, we will open up a public hearing on the district's proposed budget and proposed tax rate and invite any taxpayer present who desires to address the board on the proposed budget or proposed tax rate to come forward. Okay, not hearing from any taxpayer payer, sorry. I will close the public hearing on the proposed budget and proposed tax rate at this time. Potential board action on those items will be taken up at a later time in the meeting. And at this time, we will move to the next agenda. And at this time, we will move to the next agenda item, the superintendent's report. Dr. Kincaid.
All right, well, good evening. Just a few items tonight. First, I wanted to talk about the first week of school. We have some pictures for you here to take a look at. It was a great first week of school, in fact, one of the smoothest first weeks of school that I can remember ever having, and I was really proud of that. Of course, that doesn't happen by accident. I wish our principals had stayed. All of our employees worked extremely hard to implement good systems and processes for getting our kids started and taking care of them as they came back to school. And so I want to just appreciate them and say how grateful I am for our employees and their work. We had thirteen thousand and fifty students in our classrooms on the first day of school, and that number has grown. Today, we have thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty students. That's about a hundred and seventy-nine students less than the eighth, eighth day of school last year. However, we started school a week earlier last year, so we had a little bit of time there. We do expect to continue growing our students over the next several weeks. I've mentioned that before. Will typically grow up to Labor Day and beyond, and districts typically hit their high point just before the official snapshot date that we have to report our numbers to TEA, which is the last Friday in October. And as you will recall from Mrs. Davis's presentation, last month, we are projecting and budgeted for fourteen thousand twenty students. So it looks like we'll make that based on just how we typically grow from the beginning of the school year. Next, instructional staffing. I wanted to just focus a little bit on teachers since we continue to hear about teacher shortages in the state, across the nation, and even in our local areas. So I wanted to give you an update of where we're at. Currently, we have, Waco ISD has four classrooms without permanent coverage, one at Waco High, two at University High, and one at Dean Highland. We have substitutes covering those four classrooms until we can find a suitable replacement. And I would mention special ed has been particularly challenging this year. We have three of those four vacancies that are in special education. Those are inclusion teachers, so not quite as challenging as our self-contained special education classrooms, but still, we have a need. For our transformation zone schools, there are currently eleven vacancies, one at Brook Avenue, three at GW Carver, three at Indian Spring Middle School, and then four at J.H. Hines Elementary, eleven there. And then together, Waco ISD and the Zone have seventy-three teachers on emergency permits. And what that means is that we have hired some quality people who have bachelor's degree, and they have required hours in a particular content that meets the state qualifications for an emergency permit, but they still need to pass one or more state certification exams. And then once they pass those exams for their certification area, then they are issued an intern certificate, and they're eligible to continue with an alternative certification program. So seventy-three of those. We have eighteen teachers who have met that qualification and are actively in an alternative certification program. And once they complete a full year and pass all of the required tests, then they can become certified teachers. So challenging year indeed, but I'm really proud of how far we got under the circumstances. I want to thank our human resources staff for their work this summer, and they just really did a great job in a really challenging time of getting our schools staffed, and will continue to work to fill vacancies. The next item is our Future Educators Academy, and it's up and running finally, after talking about it since December of two thousand and nineteen. We have forty-seven students enrolled in the program. We thought we would have sixty-three, but some of those students have decided to go in a different direction, choosing different programs. We expected that would happen, but still, we're incredibly excited about having fifty students who've said that they want to become a teacher. Those students are at South Waco Elementary. They're spending a half a day there, where they are currently taking pre-AP English, pre-AP Math, and Advanced Placement Social Studies at the elementary campus, so we have dedicated classrooms for them. They're also taking a project-based research course where they will complete a project on educational careers or educational theories. Each of those students will be assigned a mentor to help them with their project, and while they're at South Waco Elementary, they'll be working in classrooms, and that's really exciting. They're also going to participate in Seminar Fridays, where they get to hear guest lecturers and engage in discussion on educational topics. And this week's guest lecturer is Celeste Odegrin, who is our Director of Advanced Academics. She'll be visiting with the students tomorrow. And then finally, they have a family orientation event that will be held on September the seventh at six o'clock P.M. So really excited about our Future Educators Academy, and we just want to encourage them to stick with it for a few years and come back and sign up to teach for Waco ISD.
Thank you so much. Just before we move on to consent agenda and agenda items, just wanted to remind the board of our policy in our, in our district handbook for board members when we proceed in, forward in our approving consent agendas discussion. If we follow, the district follows Robert's Rules of Order, which is the, I know some of you know this, which is the, if there is a, if a person, a trustee wants the floor, if they would adjust, address the chair, in this case, it would be me as the president right now, leading the meeting, and then I will give a person the floor to be able to speak. This really does allow kind of a systematic order so that people can be heard and everyone can be heard. And so just again, we follow Robert's Rules of Order. It's in our policy. And also, also with Robert's Rules of Order, when an item is presented, we wait for a first motion and then a second, and then we discuss is typically how the Robert's Rules kind of go. So first, someone makes a motion, someone says a second, and then we can open up the floor for discussion, again, getting the presiding officer to help facilitate that conversation. So, so we can do the first consent agenda. The consent agenda, I will entertain a motion approving the consent agenda as presented.
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Great, thank you, Mr. Vedanya.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Decision passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, item eight. This is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding adoption of the budgets for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal school year. Again, Ms. Davis.
So yes, so this is the adoption of the budget. As I said, we have to do that before the tax rate. You have three budgets in the official budget that you're adopting, the general fund budget of a hundred and sixty million three hundred and ten thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars, the child nutrition fund budget of ten million nine seventy-eight five thirty-eight, and the debt service fund budget of twenty-four nine oh one oh forty-eight. You will also adopt the budgets that we are fiscal agents for. Those budgets, in some cases, have been adopted by, had the Challenge Academy Board Meeting first thing this morning, and they adopted their budget as well. But that consists of our two advanced, Greater Waco Advanced academies, the Healthcare Academy and the Manufacturing Academy. The Healthcare Academy is one million four oh two one seven nine. The Manufacturing Academy is one million three oh one oh nine oh. McLennan County Challenge Academy, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Regional Day School for the Deaf, one million twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eight dollars. The budgets were prepared with the following assumptions. ADA was estimated at twelve thousand four sixty-one. We had a local net taxable property value of eight billion eight hundred and thirty-eight million two hundred and twenty-one thousand eighty-six dollars, and with eight million eight ninety-one eight sixteen in value under protest. Maintenance and operations rate of ninety-four point two nine cents, interest and sinking rate of twenty-nine point eight nine six nine cents for a hundred dollars of assessed valuation. The budget does include a general compensation increase of three percent. Teacher was received an average increase of one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we increased the starting salary of teachers from fifty thousand two fifty to fifty thousand nine twenty-five. And all the other employees did receive three percent of the increase of the midpoint of their applicable schedule. The district's monthly contribution to group health insurance was increased from four hundred and twenty-eight dollars per employee per month to four hundred and fifty-six dollars. The budget also includes mandatory benefit increases in contributions to the teacher retirement system. Included in the budget, and this is new language for this year that we're required to include, included in the budget are the state compensatory education funds. This Texas Education Agency allot funds for school districts annually for state compensatory education. The SCE funds may be used to provide a compensatory intensive or accelerated instruction program that enables the students to be performing at grade level at the conclusion of the next regular school term. SCE is defined in law and supplemental to the regular education program to directly increase the academic achievement of students identified as at risk of dropping out of school. The district may not budget funds received for any other purpose until the district adopts a budget to support additional accelerated instruction under TEC forty-two point one five two. Now, we are allowed to adopt it at the same time. Anyway, the district is projected to receive twenty million six hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and fifty-eight from the state through the foundation school program. We are required to minimally expand fifty-five percent of those funds on direct program. We have included in the budget presented is thirteen million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars of SCE funds, which is compliant with the fifty-five percent, over the fifty-five percent. Anyway, so you have the attachments, you have the official budget, and then you have the other four budgets that we are required to adopt. So the administration recommends the Board of Trustees consider and approve budgets for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year in the following amounts, or the amounts I have already stated as presented, for the general fund, child nutrition fund, debt service fund, and then other budgets for the Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy, Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, McLennan County Challenge Academy, and the Regional Day School for the Deaf.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Davis. I will entertain a motion to take action, appropriate action regarding the adoption of the budgets for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year.
I move that we, the Board of Trustees, approve the budget as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Gillery.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Ms. Davis. Item nine, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding a resolution adopting the tax rate for the two thousand and twenty-two tax year.
So this is the final step in our truth in taxation is to adopt the tax rate. So we have, as we've just discussed, we are recommending, proposing a rate of, total rate of a dollar twenty-four one eight six nine per hundred dollars of valuation, ninety-four point two nine cents for maintenance and operations, and twenty-nine point eight nine six nine cents for interest and sinking. So the motion for this action must be made, I have it highlighted in red in your agenda item, and it must be made in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. So we, I will ask for a motion approving the resolution to adopt the tax rate for the two thousand and twenty-two tax year. Entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the tax rate as presented for the two thousand and twenty-two tax year.
It's point, point of order. There's specific language that has to be.
Sorry.
No, it's, it's fine. Thank you, Mr. Grant. I appreciate that. The specific language.
Do you want me to move? I have the language.
He's fine.
I'm on the wrong one. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one point two four one eight six nine, which is effectively a twenty point five percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Is there any discussion?
Can you explain, I'm sorry, I feel like I should have asked you this before, that twenty point five percent?
It's over the effective tax rate, which is that calculation that actually comes out to about a dollar three is the, and the effective tax rate, the language here has stayed effective tax rate, but it's what is now known as the no new revenue tax rate that we had talked about before. So that's over that rate. It is not an increase in what our current rate was.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, one more thing. So you will also notice when you get down to the resolution that it says that it increases the, says the tax rate will effectively be raised by twenty point five percent and will raise, raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a hundred thousand dollar home by a negative eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. That's the way the law is written.
Is there any more discussion? I will entertain a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay, we have item ten, review and discuss two thousand and twenty-two state accountability ratings. The presenter is Denise Bell.
Good evening. I don't have a full presentation, just that one sheet that reports out our ratings. I am very excited to share with you that our ratings came out the way that we had predicted. We only had one surprise, Lake Air was not a C, it was a B, so I was very happy, but as Dr. Kincaid will tell you, I'm super cautious when it comes to data. I'd rather be surprised up than the other way. We had a total of ten campuses increase their rating one letter or more. Two of our campuses maintained their B status across a pandemic. That's pretty impressive. And one of our campuses maintained the C, but they increased the number towards that B. We have four campuses that exited any type of federal label, any kind of school improvement piece, and we had three distinctions in campuses in the district. Our Transformation Waco Schools had two campuses that increased a letter grade, and one maintained its letter grade but increased its overall number. So any questions about this piece? I think Brazos was not a surprise to us, but I've said to you before, the TEA has acknowledged publicly that this system does not measure a school like Brazos correctly, so we are working towards, we've already done our planning meeting, to work towards the measures that they will be measured for the next accountability cycle.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
What is the score for the district as a whole? What is that letter grade?
Thank you. The district overall is a C, and we were a seventy-eight, which was down from a B, eighty-one. And that is connected to the ratings of the high schools. We struggled a bit with our high school students in gathering CCMR points, so career college and military-ready. Our kids at high school were going through a lot of things during the pandemic. We saw many of them become the breadwinner in the house. We had a lot of attendance issues for them, so graduation rate went up, four-year graduation rate went up, but the CCMR level went down a bit, and so that affected the two high schools, and so that affected the district overall because that's, they're rated the same in the current system. the district overall, because that's, they're rated the same in the current system.
And C C M R is college, career, military rating?
Yes, sir. So, we had some decreases in things like dual credit during the pandemic, because graduation rate and C C M R are lagging, so we are, this rating this year for these high schools is the class of two thousand twenty-one. So, when we correct a system with the high school ratings, it takes a couple of years for that to show, to bear fruit, because it's a lagging indicator.
So, the scores we're seeing right now are not like an accurate picture of how our district is doing right now? You saying it's lagging?
Just the high schools. This is the accurate picture of the whole district, but for the high schools, just graduation rate and C C M R, they give us a year and a summer. And so, because of that, they don't rate us on exactly the class that just graduated, they give us time to find students and finish out measures, and then, so we have like all the way to August thirtieth to graduate students and receive credit for that class. So, we, they get a longer period, and so the T E A is always one year behind, just graduation rate and C C M R.
Okay? Yes, Ms. Ayedee.
You mentioned that there is already planning happening for the next round of scores, can you talk to that?
Yes, so T E A is not only create, is not only redesigning all of the STAR tests, they are also redesigning the accountability system in exactly the same year. So, we've, I've already begun appointments with the campuses, the methodologies that we've used for showing growth and achievement are, were sound, strong starts for us to be prepared for this system. So, I've been watching what T E A's proposals have been to make sure that what we were doing this past year carries over, so the campuses could begin right where they left off. T E A is not going to tell us the cuts, what it is to be an A or a B until sometime in late fall, but Denise Bell's a good guessing girl, so I'm going to take some good guesses and give our campuses some goals to achieve and work towards. But the system is changing, and so it's changing how it measures growth, but that growth is not far off the methodology that we use, the only difference will be the targets kids have to hit. So, the systems that we have in place, we're just talking about a different goal for our students, and all the pieces that we use will be able to help those students. The C C M R is changing, so just when we had made some progress, which you'll see with the two thousand twenty-two, well, they're going to rate the two thousand twenty-two differently, they're going to change what it takes to get some of those career, college, and military-ready measures, and right now, those are just proposals, but I'm going to go with a worst-case scenario when I talk to the high schools, and we're going to pretend like that's the harder measure, so we can continue, because remember, this class of two thousand twenty-three is not our rating until two thousand twenty-four, so we have to move quickly if we're going to get even a phase in. And then finally, the district's rating will be different. So, currently, the district is rated identical to the high schools. And so, thus, you saw the district come down with the high schools, sixty percent of the rating is C C M R and graduation rate for the, for the district. But what they're going to do is they're going to take every campus in Waco I S D, they are going to line them up by size and enrollment, and we are going to do a weighted average. So, it will be an average of every single campus overall, and it'll start with our larger campuses and I'll move down. So, some campuses will count as just like a weighting of one, and some will be like a one point two five. So, it will be their scores, it will not be solely tied to graduation rate and to C C M R. And I think the work our elementaries did bodes very well for us, because in the overall district rating, they are a very small portion. So, this is in the response to feedback the Commissioner got, that there are districts that have a lot of Fs in their elementary in their middle, but they're a B. So, how is, where's the disconnect? So, that change, I'm pretty confident, will happen. So, what I'll do now that we have our final data is look at those and see, once T E A decides what it's going to do, what would we have been this year, and move forward at that district level. So, it changes the plans for what Denise Bell will do, because I was going to make some moves, but I can be flexible. But for the campuses, the systems we put in place, it's just about hitting the right numbers.
Big difference is that all students in the state will be required to test online, and we were ahead of that, we had some, but very few students who did test by paper. We predominantly tested online. You could take to that a little bit more.
We had no technology blip, so kudos to the technology team, that with all of our students doing that together at the same time, during the same periods, we didn't have any blips on the radar, so that was a good test for us as well.
Question.
Mr. Gillery?
When are, when are we going to get the, the breakdown of this, of this data, compare them to other districts similar to ours and things like that, reading scores, the, the breakdown of what you're saying?
So, you can go to T X schools dot org, and all of it is out there in public now, and they have a comparison tool, so you can pick like the five districts you want to compare us to?
Well, I've seen all the districts in our area with As and Bs, I want to see why we have a C compared to what they have. And I wanted you, I wanted to see if you can break that down for us as a board.
I think you'd have to pinpoint for me which ones you wanted, I have to be careful, because some of them don't have our E C O dis or our ethnicity makeup, or the challenges our kids faced during the pandemic. So, I can, I can do that, I can pull it together, but I even dissuade our campuses from comparing to each other or comparing to the outside, because it doesn't really influence what their actual grade is, and the pandemic is just too much of a wild card for me to know in a small town, it could have been so much harsher than our area.
So, to H I S D, big districts, same demographics.
And they made it on growth the way we did, yeah. So, I did look at all those, ones that are like us.
That's what I want to see, I want you to break that down.
I did look at those, because I was, I was telling Dr. Kinkanen, I said, it's, everybody made it the way we did, which was through growth. It was not through achievement, like, I had told you before about that domain one, because they realized growth has to come before you get achievement, so I was looking for trends. But if you have some specifics in mind, I can put that together for you, absolutely.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
You mentioned, you said about the factors or how students were affected by the pandemic, so how is that calculated in this rating? How is that, how is the impact calculated for one district versus another district? How would they calculate, how does T E A calculate?
There's, there's no factor for that, they just expect the same thing from all of us. So, me sharing that with you is, is the things we've had to do to pivot for our kids' needs, like building night school, for example, or redesign Brazos and kids getting, you know, computerized ways to get credits. And so, we've kind of had to pivot for our students and what their needs were, once we identified that as one of the root causes, we didn't want our, we already had a low graduation rate, so in improving it, we had to start dealing with some underlying issues.
Other than demographic makeup, school districts are rated the same way?
Yes, sir.
There's no other factors that are added based on the pandemic?
Right.
Questions? Ms. Bell, I have said this before, in eight years that I have been with and on this board and watching from this dais, we have never not had less than five schools not rated, either F or D, so to have only two campuses after a pandemic, only two that are not rated, and the rest of them Bs and Cs, and if I'm remembering correctly, I remember the scores of the baselines of the kids when they came back that first year after the pandemic, and as a former teacher, it made my eye twitch, and I remember talking to Kinkanen and saying, what are we going to do? This is staggering, and I've never seen learning loss this wide, the gap, I've never seen this in Waco I S D as a former teacher, in ways, in how, as I've been tracking student data, I'd never seen that large of a gap. So, to remember back, our baselines of student data, to remember back eight years of trends in this district, I have never seen just two campuses that have been not rated, and the rest are Bs and Cs for our campuses. That is an incredible amount of work on behalf of our students, by our teachers, our administrators, everyone, this to me shows everyone has been pulling in the same direction, and I just really want to applaud the hard work that these teachers, these administrators, staff has done to get this. This is not an easy target, this is not easy by any stretch of the imagination, and this is hard, hard work, and to see only two campuses be not rated from eight when we were coming in before the pandemic is, is incredible. So, thank you to our teachers, thank you to our administrators, our faculty, and when I said that this district is pointed in the right direction, I meant it. And people are working hard to ensure that our students are receiving the best education. Programs that have been implemented in this district are things that I have not seen in twenty-two years. The reading recovery program that we've implemented, I had at my first campus that I taught at. Every student who came to that campus from kindergarten on by second grade was reading on grade level. These programs work, and I'm so excited to see the momentum that these teachers at our campuses have made. We have work, no district is perfect, no campus is perfect, but this to me is showing we're headed in the right direction, so thank you.
You're welcome. I think that Waco I S D's teachers and admin just needed me to show them the rules of the game and plan the score that they wanted, and then they did the work from there, and I just kind of came in, I don't know the kids, I don't know the teachers, so I can give an objective view to the data and talk about pivots, so really keeping them focused on that. Having been in Waco for almost twenty years, I left for a while for Region Twelve, but I'm back, and having worked at some of our campuses that were unacceptable in, back in the day, I have a passion for that turnaround, so this, to me, just shows me, it's very easy for people to be dismissive and say, well, there was nowhere to go but up, it wasn't really true, because there were campuses that did not go up, and, but it's harder to teach a child who's many years behind than it is to get a kid back on track who is never behind. So, it's, it really is, all of our children moved, like I had told you last time, all of our kids made growth, even our Meats and Masters, not just our Did Not Meats and Approaches, and that shows me that it's systemic, so I'm so proud and privileged to work with our administrators and our teachers.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Say that you mentioned our C C M R numbers were struggling, and that's a concern for me. My number one goal for every student is to be college, career, and military-ready when they leave the district. So, I understand that we've played the game, and we've learned, and I think it's great work, I'm happy by these ratings at some of the schools growing up, I'm happy that we have only two not-rated schools in the district, and I understand that it takes growth to get achievement, but I would definitely want to see more achievement. I understand that our focus is to, on growth, but if our kids are not graduating college, career, and military-ready, I don't think we're hitting our target. So, I would definitely thank, thank the work that's being done, but I would definitely want to hear that our students aren't college, career, and military-ready by the time they're leaving our high school.
Absolutely, that is a goal that we have. First, we had to get them graduated in four years, because our highest graduation rate was six years, so once we've got that, the C C M R is definitely a focus that I will have with the two high school principals, absolutely.
Well, C C M R criteria changed.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, you, do you want to speak to that?
So, for the class of two thousand twenty, which was, would have been two thousand twenty-one's rating, the rules changed. We used to get points for students who were, who completed a coherent sequence of C T E classes, which statistically, those children are career-ready, but we, they changed that and said, no, that's not enough, and so they took that away, which was a strength. And we also had students who were enlisting in the military, and they took away that measure across the entire state, not just for us. So, the things we leaned into first, as we improved other scores, well, those things were gone, and now T E A is about to change the rules again for the things we have made moves on, so it's going to ripple again. So, the constant changing, we've been focusing in on the things that we can control and we can really work on for our students, absolutely.
President Cordwick.
Mr. Grant?
Couple of things. Trustee Ochoa and I were at a training session at Region Twelve this week, wonderful three-hour session on this exact thing, how it's measured, how we need to be good trustees towards it, and they spoke about the military career, college career military readiness, and how the military readiness particularly for our district was significant, the twenty percent or so of our students fall into that, but they didn't count it this time, so it hit us disproportionately, which skewed our numbers, and, but the second thing I wanted to say was that Stephanie Cuchara, I think that was her name, spoke unbelievably high of you and of the whole team, and was quite frustrated that we took you from Region Twelve and said that, that we have an all-star. So, we don't often hear applause and, and encouragement, and I want you to know that you have a fan at Region Twelve, and she was glowing at the trajectory for our district, was amazed, and was not quite as glowing about the other district represented, and it was nice to be in that seat. So, thank you.
She just didn't realize home is where the heart is. I came to New York, from New York to Waco I S D, and I left for a little while and came back home, so.
Is there any other discussion? Good job, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to review, discuss the two thousand twenty-two summer enrichment camps. Mr. Tenney.
Good evening, Dr. Kinkanen, Madam President, members of the board. It's a little tough to follow an all-star, Mr. Grant, and I know my place, I know that we have experts in the room, both in finance and also in the area of leading us in the right direction as far as accountability is concerned, and I can tell you, if there's anyone in this area, in this region, that can move us towards the bull's eye of the ever-moving target, it's going to be folks like Dr. Kinkanen and Mrs. Bell. So, thank you, Denise, for all you do for us. Right. It's not often that we get close to what our vision might be, and Dr. Kinkanen and I have not talked about this, so I'm not close, I'm not sure how close we were to her vision for the summer, and maybe she'll tell me that by the end of this presentation. So, I do want to say that we took an idea, there was obviously some thinking before we designed think, designed thought, rather, and we did, we did build the airplane while we were flying it a little bit this summer, but next summer, I think we have some exciting things that we're going to be able to explore, and some, some things that we can do to improve what, on the great things that happened this summer. So, let's talk a little bit about enrichment. Some of these slides are pretty dense, I'm not going to read them to you, and I hope you can appreciate that. We had many partnerships over the summer, we had advanced academics onboard through things like superintendent scholars and the T S I boot camp, then we had other partnerships, Art Center Waco, Baylor University provided tremendous programming for our students this summer in the area of gifted G team and advanced academics. C T E did quite a bit, and you'll see some of those pictures in a moment, the Girl Scouts joined us this summer, I code, computer science for kids, learning coding, and all of those fun things that are up behind the sky, you know, we're teaching, we're, our job is to prepare kids for a future that we have not even been able to consider, and things like I code certainly take us in that direction. Waco Civic Theater provided a couple of great weeks of camps for us, you'll see some of those pictures, the World Hunger Farm, the relief program, led by Sky Tony, who did a wonderful job for us this summer, and Mr. Grant, you're lucky to have him onboard, he's a tremendous person. And then we had the Y M C A all summer, from the week school let out until August fifth, and it was, it was a good program with people that really cared about our kids and worked very, very diligently to meet the, the vision of the superintendent in terms of reading, improving reading, reading comprehension, and teaching the whole child. So, what did our kids learn this summer? They learned quite a bit. I'm going to say that there was the arts, there was engineering, I've already talked about coding. In Camp Invention, I watched the kids learning about physics, they learned about themselves, so some S E L, which is very important. We keep talking about coming out of the pandemic, and our kids need to learn how to manage themselves within themselves, so that they can be flexible in an ever-changing environment for what we're expecting them to learn. We had college readiness onboard, community awareness, creation of ideas and new things, problem-solving, culinary, so many things. ideas and new things, problem-solving, culinary, so many things, and so much more than what is on this slide. So, we set out to communicate a list of programs to the community this summer. We did that through a website that we built in-house, presentations to staff at the campus level, paper flyers, because some folks still need that paper flyer. And you know what? That's what works. And we need to be equitable, and we really did strive to do that this summer. Feature stories in the TRIB and local television. I'd like to thank our Communications Department for all the great work they did, helping us with press releases, putting up with my voice for voice-overs, for commercials, creating content in Spanish as well as English. So, thank you very much. And then, Communications and the department, they also helped us with social media and making sure that we got everything out to the campuses. Sign-ups for camps, you see a lot of camps and a lot of numbers. The numbers that are in red, if you can see that very well, were camps that were full. They were full, and we had waiting lists. So, we're hoping for some more of that next summer. The Waco Civic Theater had 21 kids, and you're going to see some great pictures from that World Hunger Farm, had 66 kids. YMCA filled up immediately. I think it was three school days, and we had a waiting list already. So, you can see all the different things. LEGO Robotics, P-Tech, we've talked about, and that program is off and running. I wouldn't worry about that target of 60 kids for right now, or whatever it was that I heard earlier, because like the other two academies, this thing's going to take off. And we're going to see great results. Talk about CCMR, Mr. Davis, you'll see that as these kids enter our classrooms as teachers, and help us with the same problem the state's having in numbers of teachers that we're able to hire. We're going to solve that. And talk about Think Before You Design Think, that's a direct result of that.
Madam President, can I ask a question before we move on?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's fine.
The cap on the full camps, did that limitation come from us or come from, I was thinking the YMCA specifically, if there was a waitlist for that one? I know that especially for working parents, that camp is prized.
It absolutely is. There was a limit to the number of kids total. There was a number of kids that were in the camp all summer, paid for by parents. And Dr. Kim Cannon wanted to have this partnership, and she found a way to make it happen. We were able to utilize a campus, and we had them all summer, right up to the point where the teachers were coming back. Everybody was very flexible. We would love to expand those programs. We did have a cap on the amount of dollars that we could spend. Did we go over budget? Maybe a little bit. But, you know, we were doing everything we could to include opportunities for as many children as possible.
Yeah, that was a budget one. It was expensive. So, we wanted to do as many programs as we could. We met with the YMCA, and they combined some paid spots with our free spots to make that work. Obviously, it's more expensive because they had, I forgot how long they were in that session, over a month, kids were able to attend.
From May 31st.
Essentially, free childcare for the summer, which was a huge benefit to those parents.
Yes, ma'am. From May 31st to August 5th, Monday through.
But very costly.
It's a costly program, and we did the best we could to make sure that we were providing opportunities for the kids in the community. And I think your point, Ms. Iasati, is exactly right on. So, again, that's what this whole program is all about. Absolutely. And we know that folks are depending on being able to have quality opportunities for their children and be able to take care of them financially.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
On the IEngage, it says Waco ISD students only. What is that for?
Oh, well, Mr. Davis, that's an easy one. The seven kids that signed up, Baylor handled that sign up, and so they went directly through a separate QR code. I asked for a number at the end of how many kids were Waco ISD. It was open to several school districts in the area. So, we had seven this year. If we do that, that program was free for us. So, we can work on finding a way, like we talked about, improving for next year, to make sure that those kids and families understand that those opportunities are available. And we did a great job this summer, and we know that we can do even better next summer.
All the numbers are Waco ISD students only, though.
This is Waco ISD students only, not Transformation Zone students. They had separate programming that I did not facilitate, so I'm unable to report on that. So, those are the numbers that we have, and didn't want to hide anything, so there it is. All right. So, we spent about $145,000 within the grant, maybe a bit more. This was what I looked at just before I went off contract a couple of weeks ago and took the data from state and federal programs. And then, within, above and beyond, because people were working really hard to make sure we had programs for kids, transportation and whatnot, an additional $45,000 was spent in-house outside of the ESER funds. So, we had a great collaboration with folks within our building, in our district, and out in the community. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. But first, everybody loves pictures. So, you're not going to see all the pictures, and I promised Dr. Kim Cannon that I will send her all the pictures so that she can look at all the great things kids did. Principal and elements of art at the new Art Center Waco, it's a beautiful facility over on 8th Street, and there are some other great pictures here that I have that can be shared as well. But you could see artwork, and you see kids working on art, and it will help our programs, and it helps them grow as well. Camp Invention, an excellent, excellent program. This camp shows up in different variations nationwide. This was ours, and Amanda Jo Ponder did an amazing job of putting this camp together. And we saw kids learn about physics and creating new things, taking other elements. They worked from the application level all the way through evaluation and creation. And that's just exciting stuff. When you walk in and see all those kids, 90 kids, we started with 60, and we just needed more rooms. So, we did take that number up to 90 kids. And the rooms were full. There was lots of energy. What a great moment for Waco ISD. Culinary Camp, we'll talk a little bit about World Hunger Farm, because this is in alphabetical order, but you talk about taking the elements of food science and nutrition, putting them together. We have an amazingly talented staff, teaching our kids about how to meal plan and create meals. And you see that work all over town over the course of the year. It's a little bit about eat dessert first, and then the main dish. In one week, all those different items were created from scratch by our children through the leadership of the chefs. Amazing work, and I just didn't get over there to eat any of it, but next year. ICode, coding, it's a new firm in town. They came in, and they provided some really quality content in the area of computer science that will link directly to our engineering programs when they get to the high school. Girl Scouts, we saw girls learn about lots of things, learning about how to be great citizens. They learned about different countries on the planet and different cultures. It was fun stuff. They also had some physics. The picture on the bottom, the young lady with the glasses, that was at Bell's Hill. They were making cars, vehicles from nothing, straws, just you name it, they had it, rubber bands, and they were blowing up balloons for the propulsion. So, they were learning about potential and kinetic energy. Great stuff. LEGO Robotics, again, leading us towards engineering and all the things that they would learn about at high school, and this was over at Guam, led by Joe Russo, who has done these kinds of camps before, even for my own children. And I know, and I saw these kids in action, and it's great stuff, really great stuff. University for Young People, this was a Baylor program, outstanding program. We had 175 kids in that program, and I wish we had room for more. Again, we just kind of ran out of dollars that we could spend. Waco Civic Theater, those were our kids on stage at Waco Civic Theater, and it was an amazing time. And they learned about costuming and set building, all the things that I used to teach as a theater teacher. And you know what? We have some talented kids. They just need the opportunities. World Hunger Relief Farm, I saw the kids with the goats. I saw the kids make bird feeders. So many things, so many things. They learned about the food cycle. They learned how to be good stewards of the environment. And those things will connect later in biology and other science courses. And if they go into culinary, learning about the food cycle in that will have a great transference over for those kids follow with that. YMCA, kids learned how to swim this summer, reading, reading comprehension. Saw a lot of creative things going on, and they took some great field trips, some great field trips, things that they normally wouldn't get to do in the summer, or anytime of the year, quite frankly. So, let me just say thank you to a few folks. Doug McDurham, I am going to read some of this, the Art Center, Amanda Jo Ponder, Camp Invention, Sherry Wolf from the Girl Scouts of Central Texas, Dr. Jeremy Vickers and Piper Green ran the ICode camps, Dr. Brooke Blevins at Baylor was over IEngage. The LEGO and Maker Camps, Joe Rizzo, we've mentioned him, Eric Shepherd does an amazing job over at Waco Civic, and I've been in a couple of shows over there over time. Sky Tony, an amazing, amazing person with a great heart for kids. Culinary Camps was Chef Rourke and Osborne over at University High School, Olivia Gutierrez from the YMCA. And then, the Advanced Academics and the ELL staff people, Celeste Sodergrin, Grace Benson, and Dr. Jennifer Robbins, they collaborated on the University for Young People. So, some great stuff, great, great stuff. So, thank you. And this is just a picture of all the partnerships that we developed this summer. We may do some of the same things next summer, but we might do some new things, too. And so, if you have any other questions, I'm always available. It's my content information. If you need to ask a question now, I'm available for that.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yeah, I would just like to thank you. Is it still One Take Tenny? Are you still going by that?
Uh, One Take Tenny, yes, sir. That happens from time to time. It did with the voiceover commercial.
Some of the Ochoas attended a few of the summer camps, and the IEngage camp tackled some really difficult issues for kids. One of them was racism, gun violence, there was the homeless problem in Waco. So, it really got them thinking. I wasn't prepared for the conversations at the dinner table when they came home. And the other camp was the Hunger Relief Farm and had an amazing experience. We were worried because of the heat at the time, but they came home around noon really, really excited, and even entertained the idea for about 24 hours of becoming vegetarians. So, thank you to everyone.
That would be earth-shattering for you, Mr. Ochoa. I know you well.
I really hope that next summer we can grow it, because we had a really great experience.
We will try to spend that budget out as efficiently as we can and provide the most opportunity and the greatest benefit to our students. Anything else?
This idea came out of our administrative visit to the Art Center Waco, and I was visiting with Doug McDurham about, hey, might we want to send some kids here? And then, we started talking about the farm, and then it just grew. And we set the money aside in ESER for that. So, I want to thank Mr. Tenny for taking it on. We had some good ideas. We didn't have the time to do it, so he came out of retirement to help us get this done, and we're appreciative. It is coming from ESER funding, so that will go away after next summer, but we have next summer, and we're excited about that. So, if you have some ideas of camps that you're interested in seeing our kids participate in, send those to us, and we'll check into those, and just thanks again.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tenny. Okay, we will move on to item 12. I just want to say on Mr. Tenny's discussion before we move on, as I was watching and looking at some of those pictures, the teaks started coming to mind for second grade in plants and photosynthesis. And then, I was looking at some of the fifth grade, could see some of the teaks for that for some of our kids. And this summer slide is a huge issue for us here in the district. And so, these enrichment camps help curb that summer slide. So, thank you so much for your effort in coming out of retirement to help us with that. Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Tenny. Okay, on to item 12. These are items requested by trustees. We have taken, there's been discussion about it already, so we'll go ahead and move on to entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Before we entertain the motion, will we get a presentation on the designs to review? It says we would consider discuss. Will O'Connor-Roberts be coming to present the designs tonight?
Great question, Mr. Davis. Yes, O'Connor-Roberts is here to present. We just need to know what the motion is specifically. So, the specific language to the specific amendment, since we have previously done the consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the design, we just need to know what the specific amendment to that design is, the language of that.
I make a motion to amend the interior design of the glass walls in the interior classroom areas, or pods.
So, you are saying, sorry, I'm just wanting to get this all down. It has to be kind of very specific. You are saying, you are making a motion for, again, could you repeat that specifically?
To change the design of the interior walls of the classroom pods, is what they've been calling them. And those are the classroom, classroom walls. The glass walls. We want to amend that and change the design as far as picking a different material.
Okay, so, sorry, let me just get this. It has to be so specific.
I sent this to you in an email.
I, yes, but I got two different amendments, so I'm trying to figure out.
Madam President, I'm a little confused. So, we're at the meeting considering what the motion is.
We, okay, so this was, again, going back to Roberts' Rules, we have to set something in motion. So, we have to, since I don't know which amendment, we had two amendments that had been presented. The amendments were fairly vague. So, when there is an amendment, according to Roberts' Rules, when there is an amendment, the amendment typically states, I would, I want to make an amendment to strike words, blah, 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 blah from this thing, and input that, you know. So, there's specific language in that amendment. And because we received two different amendments, I just need to know, we need to put into motion, potentially, if we feel so led, to put into motion a specific amendment that is detailed out, because we are, then, if there's that first, and there's a second to that specific amendment, we can put it into motion and have a presentation by.
I think that you received two agenda item requests, but my amendment was to be build a wall separating rooms from interior classrooms that are built with materials that deny attackers from being able to shoot through walls and to hurt victims inside our classrooms. So, that is the specific amendment that I would like to see the board pass tonight.
So, you are saying you would like to build a wall separating classrooms. Is this classrooms in which, in all three?
All classrooms that students will be entering, learning, and growing, that are in Tennyson Middle School, GW Carver Middle School, and Waco High. I would like the board to consider, discuss, take appropriate action regarding an amendment and our change to those designs. And that's what I just previously stated, the specific change or amendment that I would like to see us consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on.
Oh, thank you. That is helpful to know, specifically what you're wanting. I'm sorry, I'm trying to condense the language so that we have a specific amendment to move forward on.
I got you. I'll give it to you one more time. I'm sorry. I would like to.
No, no, no. You are doing great, Mr. Davis. Thank you. Thank you. It is me trying to write it down, because everything that moves forward from this has to be made with this specific language. So, I am. with this specific language. So, I am, I'm trying to state what you are saying in specific detail and specificity, so that we know what the motion is made. So, so, sorry, I'm-
So, do you need further clarification, or have we clarified what the amendment is?
Sure, go ahead and clarify again. I'll see what I have written, if it's the same. Sorry.
I would like to amend the design, the design development of Tennyson Middle School, GW Carver Middle School, and Waco High School. I would like to specifically amend the designs in classroom neighborhoods and any other classrooms that our students will learn and grow within. Okay? I would like to build walls that separate the interior hallways, the walls that are in, separate the interior hallways from the inside of the classroom that are made with materials that deny an attacker shooting through the walls. That's what I would like to see. I don't have a specific material, but I request that the material be able to at least defer or deflect a bullet from entering the room.
Yeah, sorry, I don't think I've got it.
Which, which part is it? Um, I didn't, I said I didn't have, that wasn't part of the, the amendment. I just said I didn't have a specific material. I didn't go out and kind of price different brick or anything. I just wanted us to make sure that we had a material that would be safe for our kids to learn and grow behind, that would keep bullets from entering the classroom if, God forbid, we had an active shooter situation.
Okay, Sir, is that a motion specifically? Do you move to do that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain this.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gilleri, thank you. Okay, and I open it up for discussion.
I, I, I'm going to request, we got a letter, an email, I'm sorry, Madam President. We had, we received an email earlier. We had a meeting on last Friday with our local police department, and I was just wondering if Kyle could share that letter with the board tonight. I was wondering, I thought we were going to have a copy printed in front of us. I was wondering if we could start the discussion by having Kyle to read that letter. We-
I've got a question. Who had a meeting? I didn't know anything about a meeting.
On order.
Sorry.
Mr. Grant, yes, hold on one second. Peter, a legal question. Since this agenda item has been posted, and there has not been information tagged onto this, typically, we put presentation material with the agenda item and the recommendation, but that has not been included. Can we, is it legal for us to include that letter now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, great. Just want to make sure we are crossing our teeth and eyeing our eyes.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Gilleri.
I want to answer, answer Trustee Grant's question. We had a meeting with Waco PD after asking the last board meeting if any other police department has reviewed the plans that were presented to us, and so-
Who is, who is "we"?
When you say "we".
You said "we" had a meeting. I didn't know about a meeting.
In our last meeting, our last board meeting, when we discussed this design, we found out that there were no, no outside police departments that reviewed the design. So, Dr. Kinkanen, myself, Trustee Davis, and the architects, as well as the Waco Police, Commander Wallace was present in that meeting.
And if we, Madam President?
Yes.
And that's why you have-
Mr. Davis has the floor.
I would just say, I think that if we could get the letter read, that it'd give a, a great synopsis of what happened at the meeting, and I think, I apologize that you weren't informed. I think we couldn't have a quorum, so I think that's why other trustees were not invited to that meeting, and I think the purpose of this letter is so that trustees that didn't get to attend can review the findings from Waco Police. Correct?
That's correct.
From Waco Police, or from a particular police, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're, you're fine. Mr. Grant, you have the floor, and you may ask the question. Yes, please.
Is the letter, I've read the letter. It was sent to us today in preparation, and I wanted to be fully prepared. Is the letter from the Waco Police Department? I noticed it was on City of Waco Letterhead, or is it from a particular person at the police department? And does that person have training in school safety accreditation, or whatever it is?
When Kyle read the letter, you see the credentials of the commander within the first paragraph of the letter. As far as this is from the Waco Police Department and from his, from his department, and they reviewed the slides that were presented at the meeting, and his findings are inside this letter.
I, I got the letter today, and I reached out to the city manager, and I have not yet heard back if that's the city's, if the city is representing that letter, if, or if that is from one officer himself acting on his own behalf, because it came from his personal email account. So, I'm not sure. I, I haven't been able to verify that yet.
Madam President, but it was sent on official city letterhead, city of Waco letterhead, the email. I just want to clarify, because we're saying it was from a personal email, but it was on official city letterhead. It was signed. I think a lot of the questions that we're asking right now are laid out very elegantly in the letter, and I would love for Kyle to get a chance to come up and read the letter, and then we can ask questions, I think, if they don't hit it in the letter.
Yes, there is obviously opportunity for discussion. There's going to be a lot of, this is not the only thing we will discuss. I think even Ms. Mouse had, which I apologize for not saying her name correctly. I couldn't, it was harder for me to read, but she had some different questions as far as the process to coming up with these designs. So, I do think there are a number of questions that do need to be answered. And, Kyle, would you mind coming and just kind of talking through, maybe even some of the process, the, potentially, the, the security organizations contract, that are architect contracted with, and then, yeah, some of the issues raised in the letter. Sure.
Madam President, I'm sorry. Can we first start with reading the letter, and then can you explain the security and kind of the process? I feel like we're requesting for the letter to be read, and we're adding things. So, can we start by reading the letter, and then go through the processes of what steps you guys took?
Was everyone, if I may ask a question real quick, was everyone able to read the letter? Because it came to my email at four, five? I don't remember when it-
It was late.
It, yeah, so there was, so did everyone have the opportunity? Because we actually don't have the letter in front of us right now.
If you'd like, it would take about five minutes, but we can certainly print copies for you, because it was shared electronically earlier. We don't have multiple hard copies, but-
Would that be helpful for everyone, or is everyone okay?
I have mine.
If you get on your email too, or your iPad, you'll be able to look it up too.
But, yeah, thank you. Sure, go ahead and read the letter. I'm sorry, we, I just wanted to make sure everyone had the same information, was able to read that information, and move forward. Thank you, Mr. DeBir. If you can proceed, read the letter.
I'm sorry. August 24th, 2022. Dear Waco ISD Board members, thank you for giving the Waco Police Department the opportunity to review safety elements of the new schools being built by the Waco Independent School District. On August 12th, through a Zoom meeting, architects presented the design plans for Carver Middle School with a small number of school board members, Dr. Kinkanen and Waco ISD Police Department Chief David Williams also participating in the meeting. Creating an environment that is conducive to an enriching learning experience while simultaneously providing for the safety and protection from the physical and emotional harms that can potentially endanger our children is a difficult task. It is important to include stakeholders across the community in the planning process to ensure an effective, layered, physical security plan that meshes with student and staff training and drills, and the responses of local law enforcement, fire department, and paramedics. Before sharing any information about the review of safety plans for the new schools, I'd like to begin by sharing my background. Just an editorial note, obviously, this isn't my background. This is Jared Wallace's background, and he is the commander for the Community Services Division of the Waco Police Department. I am a 31-year police veteran and the commander of the Community Services Division of the Police Department. Applying crime prevention through environmental design, or SEPTED principles, to address crime, safety, and human behaviors, along with instructing classes to aid the community with their response to active shooter situations, are among the many responsibilities of this division. I received my initial SEPTED training from the Texas School Safety Center in 2001. Most of my experience applying SEPTED principles has been to the built environment rather than during the planning phase of a new structure. I began instructing law enforcement rapid response to active shooter in 2010, which is the primary law enforcement training program to respond to active shooter situations taught across the nation. I began instructing citizens' response to active shooter events in 2014. I received certification to instruct both courses from the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training Center, or ALERT. The Texas School Safety Center and ALERT are both based out of Texas State University. I am also a former SWAT operator and SWAT team leader that has unfortunately had the experience of responding to an active attack situation. As we review built and planned environments for safety and security assessments, we prioritize life safety issues over property concerns and reputation. Additionally, we try to protect organizations from successful premises liability lawsuits by understanding the organization's duty to provide a safe environment. Two terms that guide our review of the duty to provide a safe environment for others is foreseeability and reasonableness. We focus on the threats and hazards that are foreseeable by considering what has occurred in the industry or environment in the past, and recommend reasonable solutions to address those foreseeable threats and hazards. I share this information with you to provide an understanding of the perspective we have as we review facilities and environments in our jurisdiction. I am not certain whether a school board or school district has any immunity to premises liability lawsuits. I do not write this attempting to imply any sort of liability or immunity. The elements of premises liability are simply the lens through which I apply SEPTED principles when reviewing the plans and built environments of others. A review of the data of active attacks compiled by ALERT identified that there were 464 active attacks between 2000 and 2021. Of those attacks, schools have been the location of the attacks 69 times. Current or former students were the attackers in 60 of the 69 active attacks on schools. A review of the weapons used in the active attacks indicate that at least one firearm was used in 434 of the 464 total attacks, with 33% of the attacks involving more than one weapon. Handguns were the most powerful weapon in 262 attacks, excuse me, in 262 active attacks. Rifles were the most powerful weapon in 123 active attacks. Shotguns were the most powerful weapon in 42 active attacks. When I reviewed the safety elements as they were presented in the Zoom presentation, I saw several measures designed to create layers of security from the perimeter boundaries, school grounds, and building perimeter. These safety elements involved perimeter fencing, clearly defined traffic lanes, and sidewalks. I heard that there would be a single point of entry with a vestibule to control access into the building. The plan utilized effective territoriality, access control, and surveillance measures that I had hoped to see. This appears to be an effective plan that, when maintained and meshed with proper procedures of staff, reasonably protects students and staff from an outside intruder entering the building without being detected, deterred, or delayed. When I reviewed the safety elements inside of the school, I learned there were safety measures incorporated in the design that would be effective controlling access from one section of the school to another. However, I was very concerned when I heard that the design identified two out of every eight classrooms were safe rooms, and these safe rooms had a wall of glass separating the room from the hallway. The only safety feature of the glass separating the safe room from the hallway is that the glass is tempered, which protects individuals from being cut if they were to fall into the glass. There were no plans to provide any ballistic protection or glazing to protect individuals from an active attacker, either shooting through the glass at individuals inside the room or entering the room by shattering the glass and making entry to do harm to individuals inside. I do not consider this design to be safe or recommend calling these rooms safe rooms as they are currently designed. Ammunition for handguns, rifles, and shotguns currently available on the market and available to the public can easily penetrate glass and still have enough velocity to kill or seriously injure individuals inside the room. Additionally, tempered glass can be breached by individuals intending to do harm to those inside. When considering that six out of every eight classrooms will have no walls separating the room from the hallway, it is easy for an active attacker to identify where the potential victims are during an attack on a school with this design. Whether or not a drape is installed and drawn is of little consequence. It is akin to hiding behind the drapes in a dangerous game of hide-and-go-seek. ALERT, through their citizens' response to active shooter events lesson plan that I instruct, does not recommend hiding as an effective response to save lives during an active shooter event. ALERT has moved away from the run, hide, fight motto that was taught years ago. Instead, we recommend using the avoid, deny, defend method to protect yourself and others during an active attack situation. Hiding is not an effective safety plan. Denying the attacker from being able to attack potential victims by retreating to secured rooms that offer safety is what is currently recommended if individuals are unable to avoid the attack. Additionally, it is important to note that of the 69 active attacks that occurred in schools, 60 of the attackers were current or former students. The likelihood of the attacks starting inside the school because the attacker is a student is significant. Designs such as this can improve natural surveillance and interactive learning, but they also make staff and students more vulnerable to attacks such as attacks from an individual already in the school. It does not appear that the security plan being considered takes into an account an attack that begins inside the school. It is quite possible in a school environment, an attacker is more likely to know the layout and the security plan of the school before the actual day of the attack. Reviewing the after-action reports of several active attacker events, I am not aware of any situations where attackers shot through walls attempting to murder victims. I am, however, aware of many situations where active attackers shot through doors and glass inserts in doors attempting to breach the door or murder victims inside. Attackers tend to shoot what they can see or where they expect their victims to be. I do not recommend using unprotected glass as a barrier wall separating a safe room from an interior hallway. If glass is used, I recommend hardening all wall and door glass with ballistic and security glazing needed to protect the glass walls and doors of safe rooms. I recommend that Waco ISD increases the security elements of the safe rooms to provide the final layer of security that denies an attacker from inside the school from potential victims. While there can never be a guarantee of safety and security, it is foreseeable that active attacks can be initiated from individuals already inside a school. Building a wall separating a safe room from an interior hallway with material that denies the attacker shooting through the wall to murder victims is reasonable. Respectfully submitted, Jared Wallace, Commander, Waco Police Department. Then he lists three sources, and I'll skip the URLs, but read the titles of the sources. Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training, ALERT Center at Texas State University. Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency K-12 Security Guide, Third Edition. And Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency School Security Assessment Tool, or S-SAP.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Izetti.
Can I request that the architects respond to this letter? Is that, can we do that?
Yeah. Mr. Sir Senior.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Everybody is doing well. So, I, like many of y'all, are just getting this for the first time, so I can't specifically respond to all the items within this. I would want to put this into the context of overall of the meeting, is when we had the meeting, it was my understanding that we were talking about the school's security protection overall. Some, some of the elements we did not discuss within the meeting, so- Some of the elements we did not discuss within the meeting, so it was not, what I would say, a formal review through the process. We were, we were originally on the invite was District's draft, two of the Board of Trustees who were able to present that. This does cover several of the elements that we talk about when we talk about school design and safety, SEPTED, those type of elements. And again, we look at doing the same things, detecting, deferring, and delaying. And so, there is a process of layered security throughout the design when we talk about the perimeter of the building, working inside through the secure entry vestibule. We do have some ballistics rating glazing. We have compartments within the building to slow individuals going through the facility if they were to come in, and other elements within the design.
There was never a safe room designed in, within those classroom pods. That was, there was a request by Trustee Gillery when he visited Lake Belton High School of Mr. Surzinger that we might add some more 3M film on some of those classrooms so there was a place to retreat, but that was never original to the design of this campus. The strategy was the layering of the exterior of the building, the safety vestibule, and the entry points and the ability to lock down those pods in the case of an emergency.
That is correct.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
In, in the meeting that we had, safe rooms were definitely referred to, correct?
So...
We referred to the two rooms out of eight. I'm just wanting to make sure I'm getting the clarification here. We were told that there would be eight classrooms in each learning neighborhood, each classroom pod, and that two of them were deemed "safe rooms" because they had a 3M film, and that the students would migrate to those two safe rooms in the pod, but we didn't have a procedure for exactly how they went down. That's what I was told in the meeting, so I just wanted to make, to clarify that.
So, what we talked about was the overall layers of the security and the overall approach to the facility design. Based on our request and the discussion, we talked about creating areas of, that are more safe, or safer rooms. It was not intended that they were, I'll call it a bunker. It was an additional layer of security and protection. We were proposing with the 3M film within several key spaces around the building to add additional layers throughout the design for impact resistance.
And, and you said about having the glazing, but that is on exterior windows, that is not in interior glass that'll be in the classroom neighborhoods, right?
Could you rephrase your question?
You mentioned earlier that you said it's, in your various layers of security for the building, you said it was glazing at some places throughout, on glass, you just said, throughout the building? So, I was asking, are those, that glazing, is it in classroom neighborhoods, or is it in exterior windows? Or where is that glazing specific? Is it everywhere where all the...
Which glazing?
Any glazing.
Glazing is glass.
Yeah.
Yeah, so glazing is glass. We use the term glazing, whether it is an exterior window or an interior window.
So, is it ballistic glazing? I think that's more of what I'm trying, is it a ballistic glazing? Because I think in the letter, he was talking about a ballistic glazing. So, is that the same kind of glazing that we're referring to right now? Or are you referring to something different?
Glazing is a generic term.
Yeah, so not ballistic glazing.
Well, it refers to both.
So, will we have, will we have ballistic glazing, and will that ballistic glazing be in classrooms?
No, it's currently proposed at the front entry to protect that, that front level of security.
And could you review for us what interior protections? I get the exterior protections, the vestibule, one entry. I think he laid out that 60 of the 60, let me see, let me get my numbers right. 60 of the 69 attacks were current or former students, so it's a high probability that if we did have an active shooter situation, it would be somebody who's already had access to the building. So, that means those vestibules or that one entrance point won't really serve as a protection if they're already in the school. So, what protection do we have if someone's already in the school building?
So, within the school envelope, we've talked about card access and security, we've talked about video surveillance, we've talked about the compartmentalization within the facility. There is also, we are talking about right now, the hardening of the facility and the infrastructure. There's also an operational plan that the district would have to be able to support what occurs within the event, very much like the commander here speaks of "avoid, deny, defend," that those type of actions need to come into play as well.
Okay, Ms. Isetti.
President Cordwick.
Okay. Mr. Grant, yes.
A couple of things. I want us to back up and just, words are very important, and words matter. It was mentioned earlier that if we don't do X, or if we don't do Y, then we don't love our children. That's offensive to me. I think everybody in this room is here because they love their children, and they love the children of Waco ISD. I think it's critical, as we have these discussions, that we not fall into the temptation that our political arenas have seen, and that we care for one another no matter what our belief on this topic is. I'm a little bit frustrated that this, at our TASB meeting in San Antonio that most of us were able to go to, we talked about a team of eight, and we talked about working together and communicating together in such a way that we can fight off contention and difficult conversations before they ever come to be. This is the first I've learned, when I got this letter, that some of these meetings were happening. This is the first I've heard that there were conversations in neighborhood associations and in all kinds of different places. If we're going to work together for the good of our district, then we must communicate all along the process. It's hard to have a conversation based on a letter that we received at 5:00 in the afternoon. It's hard to know when experts in school planning, who have gone to all kinds of continuing education, that have hired folks that are experts in the, in school safety, come with a proposal, and yet we receive a letter from someone else that completely contradicts it. It's hard to respond to that in two hours and feel like we're comfortable. And so, for me, boy, it seems pitted that if we make a decision one way or the other, that we're not going to love our children. And that's, we got to be really careful here. The purpose of a school is to create spaces where children can learn and thrive and grow. We must do that in a way that keeps them safe. We must do that in a way that, that ensures their safety and their protection. But we also got to make, make some decisions that are tough and challenging, right? This is coming from a city employee that, I'm a builder, and I've had to work through buildings, get permits and all kinds of things. This isn't, this isn't a city standard for any kind of commercial building. This isn't an expectation that we have to apply for when we, when we build a church, or build a restaurant, or build a grocery store. We don't seem to have the same kind of passion about this. I go to church, and I have children. That, it breaks my heart that we have to have these conversations, first of all. But, but to me, Uvalde seems to be a spark for so much of this. Uvalde had no glass doors, Uval, glass walls. Uvalde has, has thrown us into a frenzy that is just hard to manage, and yet, much of it seemed to be human error. There were people inside the building with guns. There were people that should have done something, and they didn't. And so, this is a very important conversation, but I hate to have this conversation after just being delivered all of the information.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis, one second. I just, I want to remind our Board of our BBF Local. It is our Board Member's Ethics Code that is been adopted in, has been adopted, and the Honor in Conduct says, "I will base my decision on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor." So, there is a ethics code that we hold to. I think I have questions, when I saw Commander Wallace's, I know him, he usually goes to most of the, goes to most of the neighborhood associations, so I see him often there. The questions I had were, in some of the data points, you know, he talked about 434, what was his word?
Active attacks.
Active attacks. What were those attacks? Were they, you know, and then he talks about 69 that happened in schools, 60 with a gun, and I thought, okay, or...
They don't use active shooter anymore.
Excuse me, I have the floor, point of order.
It was just point of information.
Excuse me, I have the floor, this is a point of order.
Point of information, Madam President.
Point of order means that I have the floor, and I will give it to you in just one second. I'm asking a question, and I expect to have my full time. I will give you your full time. Thank you, sorry. 60 of them said current or former. That's a big difference, because former students usually aren't allowed on campuses. So, to know that percentage of current students that had that is a question that comes to mind, and to me, is a data point that would be very helpful to know, because when I look at this, I don't, you know, he states 434. I don't know in what context that happened, I don't know. And then, when he states 60 of current or former, to know the difference between those, because when I do the calculations, 15.9% of these 434 cases actually happened in a school. And if I remember correctly, their active shooter training given by the city says that a majority of the active shooter cases happen in 50%. Most people think that it happens within schools, mass shooting happens within schools. It's 25% that happen in schools, 50% that happen in places of business. So, I am, I'm really, I need to know, there's so many questions that this letter kind of opens up for me, and now I am just talking, so I will go get to my question. We have one person from the Waco Police Department, which I'm so thankful for his time, I am so thankful for his energy. Thank you, Mr. Gillery and Mr. Davis for coordinating that. I always think eyes on a plan is very important, and so, thank you for doing that. I also want to know, who are the security forms contractors that our architects use? So, I know this process has been kind of a two-year process. Architects have been gathering input and data along the way. Who have they consulted?
So, I can't speak to that directly, but I'm sure they would share the resources and expertise that they draw.
Madam President, before you guys start, I would like to address that we asked about safety concerns in interior classroom neighborhoods before the Uvalde shooting. We were told that it would be a place to retreat in the classrooms, that we later found that was not an effective place. So, Uvalde did not spark this conversation. Uvalde cemented that we needed to take this discussion seriously. I understand that we received this letter, some feel like they didn't have enough time to read through it. I feel like we have a lot of questions about his credentials that he laid out verbatim. I feel like we're asking questions about the credibility of resources, and he listed sources with links that you can click on to see exactly where he got the information from. If trustees feel like they don't have all the information, I feel that maybe we need to table this discussion until the next meeting. But I think what we don't need to do is disregard a, a, a letter that was sent to the Board of Trustees from a concerned and decorated commander in our city's police department. I understand that people were frustrated because of different processes. I was invited to a neighborhood association meeting. I go talk to my constituents regularly, that's part of what we do and part of what our obligation is as a board member as well. I've been through those same trainings as well, so I think we're all on the same page with our required trainings and what they state. I think the discussion needs to be the interior hallways and the, the pod areas, because I think losing one student or staff member is way too many for me. So, I think if, if the board members, if we feel that as a board, we didn't have enough time to digest the information that was given, maybe as a board, we can table this discussion into a later meeting so that everyone has time to go over the letter. I had time to go over the letter and read and check the links as well. That's not a judgment as anybody else, but if we don't, I think it would be best that we tabled the discussion until everybody had time to research, because this is a pivotal issue. Our schools that we're replacing have been up 50 to 65 years. So, for the next 65-plus years, these buildings will stand in our community, and if they are not safe, that is a concern that we need to address as a board. So, I do, that, that's kind of my recommendation for us as a group, if we don't think we have enough information, or you need time to review, maybe we need to move to table this discussion into a further meeting.
President Cordwick.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
I, I want us to be careful of saying that a plan is not safe. There are different degrees of safety. We have the White House, we have the Pentagon, we have jails. Those are ultimate levels of safety. We have a city park under a live oak tree. That is a very different level of safety. We're not deliberating whether or not we are choosing safety. I want that to be very clear. You just said, "We need schools that are going to be safe." Well, of course. Well, of course. I have a son that I love, and I want him and his friends to be safe. I think part of my frustration is that it would be nice to have a conversation along the way that says, "I have some concerns. These are some of the things that I am thinking. I would like to have a conversation with this person." Or, "I had a conversation with this person. Can we talk about that before we get on stage and find out that information?" Brene Brown says clarity is kindness. And to me, having all of the information in a time that is appropriate, this is a wonderful letter. It's a powerful letter. I would love for him to stand before us and for us to be able to ask questions and answer questions. This is completely incomplete without that. Just as these folks are here, being able to speak to and defend and respond, this, the proposals that we have been given are leaps and bounds safer than what we currently have. Leaps and bounds safer than what we currently have. And so, two things. One, we have got to make sure that we don't fall into the trap in saying, "I am choosing safety," and you are not choosing safety. But two, we have got to communicate better if we're going to do this together in the duration. Being surprised is not kind. Being surprised and, and not fully able to respond in a way that is educated is inappropriate. I'll just say that. It's inappropriate, and I would like for us to do whatever we can to have a thorough, thoughtful, engaged, represented conversation, and this doesn't seem to be it.
Madam President, just...
One second, Mr. Davis. Mr. Gillery has his mic and has been waiting for the floor, and I want him to have the opportunity to speak.
What I wanted to, we can do is, we can get on our board policies and our, our district policies concerning active shooters. If you get on our own policies and protocols, this design goes against that. We get our, we get our information from the Texas School Safety Center. That's what guides our protocols in most districts around this area. And in that, in those protocols, it tells our students on page 39 to hide and to cut off the lights and to lock the doors and get away from windows. How can our students get away from windows if the entire classroom is made out of a window? I still can't get around that part. We have a state representative right now that is trying to get rid of glass classrooms. That state representative, John Reasonthal, House Bill 2654, if you want to look that up. Right now, he is working to get rid of glass classrooms, and this was before Uvalde took place. You can go back to Sandy Hook, you can go back to Virginia Tech, you can go back to Santa Fe. All these school shootings happened, and none of those students and parents woke up that morning thinking of what was going to. And this is what we're looking at. When you look at these designs and you look down those hallways, I walked the hallways over at Lake Belton, and when you look down those hallways and you see glass classrooms all, all the way down, if we have an event, since you want to talk about Sandy Hook or Virginia Tech or Santa Fe, if you want to talk about any of those, in a design such as this, we will be lucky to double... in a design such as this, we will be lucky to double the amount of students that were hurt inside that design. We don't have, we don't have any time barriers. We can bring up our police chief now to talk about time barriers. He teaches this same curriculum. And it mentions time barriers on the website for the, for the, for the School Safety Center. He teaches this to our teachers and to our, to our, to our students. We have lockdown drills. We just had one when Bell's Hills had a scare. We went to the same policies that the, that the School Safety Center, Texas School Safety Center tells us to go to. And even on that website, it mentioned Sandy Hook and the Advisory Committee, and it says on there that the only time that a person has ever breached a locked classroom is when they had windows down the side of the doors. They shot through the windows, got in, and they killed the students. These are facts. If we're talking about Dylan and facts, those are facts. And that's why I'm bringing this up. We're talking about an entire, an entire wing that's nothing but glass. And this is the design. We can bring it up. We can bring it up for everyone who's watching.
The design the board approved five times. Five times the board approved this, and I want to say, I'm just going to go for it.
We could have reevaluated. I was still talking.
Doctor Kincanon.
I was still, I was still talking.
So let's stop. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will come back. So we will take a five-minute recess. Our board meeting. Mr. Guillory, I believe you have the floor. If we could have quiet, sorry, excuse me. So sorry. If we could have quiet. Thank you. So sorry. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Guillory.
You know, I want to speak to Sergeant Wallace and the Waco Police Department coming in. That started because we asked if any police agencies reviewed these plans, and we were told no. That's why that meeting was set up. We set up Commander Wallace to come in. I asked Dr. Kincanon, was that okay? Could we meet? The meeting was set up. We had the meeting. After we had the meeting, he put his findings in writing and gave them to the board. That's why, that's how we are where we are now. And what I keep going back to, and I want to stick to, are existing procedures, protocols, and policies, and where we get our information from and how we're going outside of that. That's, that's a concern of mine. If we even go to liability, we look at negligence, we look at all these things. If we have this information that's coming from our local police agency, that's coming from our local trustee who also review plans and also helps schools with evacuations and also with active shooters. I spoke to this, and this, the sidebar conversation I just had with trustee Grant, speaking to the possible carnage that we can have in a design like this if we have a student like Sergeant Wallace, I mean Commander Wallace was talking about, inside this design. If a student that's existing in the school or a previous student get onto campus and they start shooting on one of these wings, the amount of casualties that we can have with no time barriers. A time barrier is like a concrete wall, decorative brick, something that our students can get behind for refuge. If they don't have that, you know, what do they have that can protect them? Right now, if our students are inside of a classroom on any one of our campuses and we close and we lock the door, those students are safe until help arrives. In this particular design, those students have nothing. But, but, you know, thoughts and prayers is what we always hear. And they need more than that. Again, we can call up our local law enforcement agency for our police department. He can speak to time barriers, the importance of it, the importance of time barriers and barriers for his own officers that are responding to a shooter. And again, I want, maybe our attorney can come up and speak to the negligence, can speak to liability for the district. Who's going to be responsible? Will it be the trustees if we have an event? Will we be mentioned inside of a lawsuit? Will the district be responsible? Those are the things that we need to think about. We need to protect the district and we need to protect our students. And right now, with this coming up from, again, from two board members, and also, again, our local law enforcement agency speaking on this, this is, this is knowledge we now know, and we're responsible for that information that we get. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, trustee Guillory. I'd love to, I think Kyle was wanting to address something. I want to go ahead and clarify something. If three or more board members gather together, that's called a walking quorum. So that, sorry, four more. You're right. Three is the maximum. Walking quorum, so that's why kind of this could have been, is this meeting's particular was probably really small. Wanted to speak to that. Also wanted to speak for, to a couple of points. This is from a person, a Commander Wallace in the Waco PD. We don't know, it was on City Letterhead, so I don't know, is this from Chief Victorian? Is this the stance of the city police in every building? There's a lot of, again, the letter is great. It's well-written. Thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the time Commander Wallace took to write it. But it actually poses more questions for me. But, and I think I'll go back to the statement of the police department, who was, police agencies, I guess, that, that were consulted on this, or, yeah, was this, was this not run, Kyle, through, I guess my question is for you, was this not run through any police agencies? This is not run through any security measures? Knowing the intention and thought of our architects, it's hard for me to believe that, but just, yeah, would love to.
In the packet for this evening's meeting, there are four hundred and twenty pages of project meeting minutes on this, and you can see in the meeting minutes that have asterisks next to them. In the table of contents, each place that security was reviewed, including reviewed with our police chief in the Waco ISD Police Department.
Madam President.
One second, Mr. Ochoa.
I just have a few, well, I have a lot of questions, actually, before we move on. And I apologize because, you know, I wasn't on the board until May, but I was at the groundbreaking for Carver, celebrating with the rest of Waco. And I guess my question is, before we, before, because I have really a lot of things I want to get into, is how did we get to this point? At the, at the Carver groundbreaking, there didn't seem to be any concerns for safety. I think Dr. Kincanon mentioned there were two votes to approve Waco High's schematic design and the design development, two votes for Carver schematic design, design development, and one vote for Tennyson schematic design, all that were approved unanimously. And then we have one that wasn't. So I guess my question is, what, what new information came about so that we're automatically, or now we're concerned?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I, I first want to say that I understand your concern. I think the reason why the board approved, or I would say why I voted to approve the designs is because we were told it would be a safe area in each classroom where students would be that they could retreat to. After further questioning, when we reviewed the Tennyson Middle School design, we understood that there was a small concrete area of the glass wall that multiple students would have to hide behind per the architects. That triggered for us to say, okay, let's look deeper. Or for me to say, let's look deeper into this design because that doesn't sound safe. I would thought with floor-to-ceiling glass windows, I thought it would have been almost a no-brainer that it would have been some kind of ballistic shield in on them. And when we were informed that that wouldn't be because we couldn't afford that in the budget of the three hundred and fifty million dollar budget that the voters passed, that brought the concern. When we, when we talked and we asked, were there any other police agencies other than our own police chief that looked at these designs? We were told no. That was a concern for me. I felt like multiple agencies should have a look in it. I was told that our principals and our teachers and all different levels of staff had input. At the same neighborhood association meeting that was referred to earlier, a principal stood up and said that wasn't true. That works for our district. So those bring concerns to me. And then when I'm speaking to my constituents, when I'm speaking to teachers, when I'm speaking to parents that have concerns after they see the design, and they ask for the board to reconsider. So that's why I originally asked for this to be on our August eleventh meeting, but we had some, I guess, some planning issues, so it was postponed. I want to point out that per our policy as board members, as trustee Cordewig said, we can't have, we can't contact more than three, two other board members about a topic. So once I had talked to President Cordewig and once I had talked to trustee Guillory, it tied all three of our hands once they had a discussion to where we could not call any of the other trustees to have a discussion. So at that point, I followed our policy and I requested it for it to be an agenda item on our meeting so then that we could discuss it as a group. So that's what we're doing now because of the way that our policy is set up. That's the only method that we have to do so. The meeting that happened with our police department, we couldn't have a quorum. So that means more than three of us could not attend that meeting. So that's why the group wasn't invited to that, and that's why Commander Wallace gave his findings in the letter. I definitely want to say that I understand the concern that the trustees have, that you have more questions, you need more time, you want, you want to contact Commander Wallace. I think that's why I recommended that we tabled this issue and we give ourselves more time to do our due diligence as trustees, as people who have been entrusted by our communities to make sure that every classroom, any room there's students, that is created in our district for students to learn and grow will be a safe environment, you know. And, and, and when I think of a safe environment, we talked about different levels of safety, and I think education, institutions of education should be one of the highest regarding when it comes to safety because we have to protect future generations of Americans. So I think we do want a high level of safety, and I think that's what, what we're asking for, and that's how we got here. I hope that answered your question.
It does. And if I can.
Yes, please.
So my concern is, you know, we receive board packet seventy-two hours, at least seventy-two hours in advance. I just feel that that is adequate time to, to review the board packet, to, to, to write down questions that we may have. And I feel like if we, if we hit the brakes on this now, it's going to set a dangerous precedent. You know, we're going to have to vote on, on South Waco. We're going to have to vote on, on Kendrick. And I think it, I think it's going to leave questions in people's mind if we approve those changes, whether or not we're going to go back and have to address issues that should have been addressed the first time around.
President Cordewig, can I?
Yes, Dr. Kincanon.
A few things. First of all, I want to say that this team, our district team, has worked hard for you and for this community, and, and that's evidenced in the four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty-five pages in your packet where every meeting to review the designs of these schools was held with our architects. Secondly, our architects are experts. They've done their work. They use safety resources in the design of these buildings, and I trust them. And I trust that these buildings are safe. I believe them to be safer than any building that we have in Waco ISD currently. And finally, what's most important to me is that I believe that these buildings meet the educational vision that our planning committee established for these schools, and it's what we wanted for our kids, and it's what our kids deserve. And to go back and, and remove design elements that allow for collaboration and learning that gets our kids excited and engaged is really disheartening. And then in addition to all of that, time is of the essence. We have a new school opening next year. We have a school under construction now, so changing the direction of the design of these facilities will slow that work down, not to mention costs more money. But more importantly, this, I want to emphasize that this team has done what we've been charged with doing by the community committee and by the board. It was voted on and approved five times, and I believe the work is done well. And it, they're good designs. They're good for kids. They're good for teaching and learning.
President Cordewig.
Mr. Grant, yes.
We take lots of votes. We receive a packet days in advance that is over a hundred and fifty pages normally. The first time I received a packet, I realized the weightiness of being prepared. It's an overwhelming thing to have to make some of these votes. We made a significant vote tonight on the budget of a school. We have to come to these meetings prepared for the votes that we could take. We have taken five votes in a unanimous fashion on these plans. We had the plans in advance. We looked at all these plans. They were presented to us on the screen. And months later, we changed our mind because we made an assumption that it's, I thought it was going to be safe, and now I have a concern. We have discussion in all of these meetings to ask those questions. It is critical, when, when one of these things comes to us days in advance, that we know we're going to have the discussion on the item, that we see it before our eyes, that we ask those questions then so that we are good stewards of the resources of the people that have been doing all this work that come and present to us. That's one of the more frustrating things to me. We had these plans in advance. We saw these plans. We saw the fly-throughs of these plans in advance. And five votes later, after a significant incident, we get second thoughts. And, and that's, that doesn't seem to me to be a good steward or to have done our job when it, when it came time for the vote.
President Cordewig.
One second. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Mr. Vodan.
I would just like to encourage if, if people haven't, to contact your congressmen about gun safety, your representatives. That's one of the big issues or problems we can help. I know a lot of people, I'm not going to say they haven't, but I have, and I encourage other people to do it. And as far as, I mean, I'm sending my daughter to these schools. I got nephews and nieces, two years old, that are going to go to these schools. I feel that the future should be a learning environment for them, and, and I feel that they're safe in these schools. I mean, schools around the nation have done the most to increase, implement new security measures, more than anybody, more than any other business around. I mean, you know, I mean, we've, we have shootings at grocery stores. I mean, there's no changes there. We have shootings at churches. Some of them have, but most of them haven't made any changes. I mean, there was a shooting at a youth football game last week. We're not pulling our kids out of youth football. I mean, we're, we're just, I think awareness is one of the biggest things that prevents these. It's, I think it's a, a lot of, you know, awareness by students, awareness by neighbors to, to prevent a lot of this stuff. And I think that's how we're going to prevent a lot of these incidents. And, I mean, I think there was a incident at a concert that it was on the news that was prevented by people being aware that they saw this guy loading up some guns and asking for where the exits were to the, to the concert. And, I mean, that was, you know, that was prevented by awareness of other people. And I think that's what this community, the neighborhoods, students, we're going to have to be more aware and report these things. We have the, stop it. We have the stop it, and I think that, that's a great tool, and that, I think that would prevent a lot of stuff.
Madam President, can I make a comment now?
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Okay, I appreciate it. It's very disheartening to hear board members talking about our obligation to architects. I understand we're saying a lot of our team put in a lot of work, and the fact that we're questioning their work is an issue. I think we also have to put our students first and our staff members first. I too have a son that's in the district that will attend these schools. And he has a disability called osteogenesis imperfecta. So to hear that it could be a potential plan that six out of eight classrooms will have to migrate to two classrooms on the hallway doesn't really seem like an effective plan, which was what we were told at the meeting with Commander Wallace. My concern is that we're discussing as a board, more we're getting caught up in the process. in the process versus really addressing the issues that these schools may not be safe. According to Commander Wallace, according to our, our, our fire marshal that sits on the board, according to teachers and community members that we've heard from, that kids will have to go to these schools. Uh, I think it's, we, we can get caught up in kind of, uh, we can, we can talk about political statements, we can call our congress members, uh, we can pray, we can fast, those things are all great. I think it's also our obligation to ensure the best protection for our students. We have an obligation to instruction, but every single trustee on the board also talked about student safety as they ran for the board. So student safety is first because our kids need to be safe first. Then we educate our students. Um, so if a kid doesn't feel safe, they won't be able to learn anyway. And we have the facts out there to prove that as well. Uh, we, uh, we can, we can all have time to research over that. But if our students and our staff members don't feel safe, they won't be able to be effective anyway. So I think, uh, for the trustees, I understand that we have, uh, some confusion about the process and, and about, um, time to review. I would urge again, if we need time to review, I think we don't make a hasty decision to disregard the information that's being brought to the board. I think we table the discussion because I understand that there may be a time implication. Go ahead, what happened? Okay, it, it would be a time implication in that there may be financial implications in tabling the discussion. But I think that those time and financial implications are worth the safety of our students. I think whatever we need to do to ensure the safety of our students, I think any parent would not put a dollar amount of the safety of their students. I don't think any parent would be upset with the delayed opening of a school because we needed to ensure the safety of students. Um, I, I do do my due diligence on, uh, board packet, uh, packets and I read them and I asked a lot of questions. And through those questions, I was able to come to the conclusions that I've made on why these designs were not safe. And at that meeting, when I got the answers to my question and they clarified my thoughts, that's when I proceeded to ask the board to, to have more discussion about this issue. But then we decided to take a vote and I voted against the design. So it's, it's okay that we want to verify the process and talk about, uh, memory lane about how we got here. But I think the overarching idea needs to be, do we feel like trustees for the students? Not for anyone else. I, I appreciate everybody's work. I appreciate Dr. Kinnon, I appreciate the architects, I appreciate everybody that's been involved. I was a part of the 80-member committee, uh, when, at the beginning. I attended every meeting. And, and I appreciate everyone's work, but I'm saying that I feel like it's okay for us to table this discussion so that we can make the best decision possible for our kids. So trustees do not feel like we have the information we need, I urge us to table the discussion, not to ignore the potential issues that could result in our students being in an unsafe environment.
Okay, um, if I'd like to, I just want to do a point of clarification. Um, the design of the two safe classrooms was actually never presented to the board. That is something that happened in the meeting with trustee Guillory and Jared Stersinger when trustee Guillory went to go visit the actual campus. Uh, I assume, uh, Mr. Davis was brought into that conversation. Um, but that design schematic had never been presented to the board, so just point of clarification. Also, point of clarification, the architects have done two years of collecting input. While the teachers did not select the design, they did go through a punch list. So they said, we would like this, we would like this. So our architects along the way, starting with the 80-member community, committee, collected information from that, that was a six-month process, went through and has collected information all along the way. Um, obviously, the architects are experts, have built schools in, in throughout our region. They are probably current and up to date in architectural design, safety. Um, but they, so the input was not specifically on materials, it was just on like a punch list for classroom, um, what, what would you want, flexible learning spaces, that, that type of, of input. And I would also like to point out that the time and financial re- repercussions of this are fairly large. We would be throwing millions of dollars of bond money away. Um, and we don't know the cost of this moving forward, this, uh, this amendment moving forward. So there is, um, again, a lot of unknowns. Um, and, uh, we did tell the voters for our bond what we laid out, what we would want to accomplish. My only hesitation in some of this is, will we not be able to build our elementary schools? And if our high school is not in budget, or if there are any hiccups along the road, I'm really concerned. We have a, we don't have a blank check by the voters. We have an integrity issue to do what we said. Um, if we don't do what we said, to me, that's lacking integrity. Um, but I also know we don't have all the information. So I am going to assume, Mr. Guillory, and maybe I can get some clarification, that you were making a, Mr. Davis, sorry. Sorry about that. Mr. Davis, I am assuming that you are wanting to make a motion to postpone this item. Is that correct?
Uh, Madam President, I, I would just want to say that, um, I think we don't disregard this issue for the fear of unknown. I understand that it's a lot of factors that we need to consider, time, cost, project. I just do believe that we have, um, a good team of people working on this project. And I think with $350 million, I would think they would be able to find a way that we can make this project happen. So I do trust that even if the trustees decide to change the design with the architect firm that we have, um, with the additional employees that we've, uh, hired just specifically for this project, that we can figure out as a group how to stay within budget and complete these projects. I don't think that the fear of the unknown should outweigh possibly having unsafe classrooms for our students. It's, um, I, I would, i- if we, if the trustees don't feel like they have the information, I would move that we table the discussion until our next meeting so we can give trustees the time to do the research and ask the questions and, or whatever else everyone feels like they need to do so that we can make sure as a collective, we're making the best decisions for our schools, the ones who are entrusted. Because I understand, uh, Superintendent Kinnon, uh, says she trusts the architects. Uh, but my community trusts me. That's why we're called trustees. So they entrusted us to verify. And so that's all I'm trying to do as a trustee is to verify because I've been entrusted to verify. So I think that this is, we trust the architects, but I think we also take heed to what Commander Wallace told us as well. And, um, like I said, he provided resources with links from where he referenced these, uh, everything in, that he put in our letter. Uh, he put his phone number, he put his email address. We know where the police department is, the website is there. So I think we have a various, uh, means of, of figuring out the answers to the questions that we have. But I would say if you still have questions, I would move that we table this discussion until our next meeting.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis, yes, Mr. Ochoa, or who was, I'm sorry.
So, um, uh, first of all, to Commander Wallace, wherever he is, um, I really appreciate his time in putting this together for us. Um, we didn't mention the sources of his conclusions. And I, I looked over those today and, um, and made some notes. And the, I think in, in any issue, um, that's serious, whether it be our health or whether it be building schools, we are going to trust the experts to do that. And, uh, O'Connell Roberts, I believe, has been building schools since the mid-sixties. Um, they know more than anyone on this board about building safe schools. One thing I did notice, uh, that they have in common, uh, with, with Commander wrote and, uh, what is in the, the, um, cybersecurity infrastructure agency, K through 12. Uh, one thing they have in common is, is one thing that, uh, O'Connell Roberts has talked about over and over again, which is layered security, layered security, layered security. Start from the outside, working your way in. And they acknowledge right up front that no two schools are the same, uh, no two school incidents are the same, there's no one-size-fits-all approach. Um, but there is a, a comment they make on page 17 in regards to, uh, building and designing new schools. Uh, it says, "Large open spaces that improve natural surveillance increase the chances of, uh, detecting threats as they occur on school grounds." Uh, and then it goes on to say, "Incorporating open site design may therefore be ma- more appropriate, um, a more appropriate option for local education agencies building new schools and campuses." So if, if, if the work he did is thorough, well, what he's basing it on is this, and this is what they're saying. This is not, it's not an easy topic to talk about. I mean, I know that. I think we, I think there's no one on this board that is not concerned about school safety. Um, I literally send my entire family into those schools every day. So I just hope no one's going to make that comment that I'm not concerned about school safety. Um, I, I will share a very dark secret of mine. After Uvalde, I, I make a point to look at my kids' shoes when they leave the house every day. Um, it's a horrible thought. Um, I wish I didn't have these thoughts, but that's the real, that's the, unfortunately, that's the world we've created for ourselves. And there is no perfect school design idea. If there was, I would vote for them. But as a teacher, former teacher, when I see these designs, I get excited. Um, I think of Baylor Business School, I think of working in small groups and having some of my more responsible students outside, uh, working on whatever they're working on. And it just becomes a good learning environment. Um, these things are tragic and they're horrible and I wish they didn't exist. But school starts back up at Uvalde next week. Um, so we can't forget that. And I think our teachers, I think our students deserve the best education we can provide for them. And I think our teachers deserve the best tools, uh, to provide that education. And, and we're not just responsible, we're responsible to so many people, we're responsible to the community. Uh, they trusted us with $355 million. And, and if you say yes to one thing, or if you delay another thing, you're going to be denying something else down the road. Uh, like Ms. Cordewig said, it's not a blank check. Um, there's so many things to consider. Um, and I don't want you to think that, that I think that you're going into these things unprepared. But it is, it is difficult and it's a reality we have to face. And I think, um, I, I, I mean, I'm inclined to, to let the experts, uh, do their jobs.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Mr. Davis.
Um, I would just want to say the, the data point that you just gave us, we're talking about common spaces. They were not referring to classroom spaces. I understand that, uh, you and trustee Cordewig have mentioned that you guys were classroom teachers. I was a behavior specialist for five years and I worked at all three of the schools they were discussing right now. Waco High, GW Carver Middle School, right before joining the board, and Tennesse Middle School for several years. And from what I see you reference, Baylor Business School, we're not talking about Baylor Business School. We're talking about sixth graders. We're talking about fifth grade students with big eyes walking into classrooms that might not be mature enough to go out in a, in a pod area. But I, I think the main concern, and I, and I understand the layered protection. Again, we, we didn't, we're not amending, uh, design of the exterior walls or the exterior plan. Um, I think like I've brought up several times, the, the letter, the, I think even Commander Wallace says in his letter that he thinks the layered protection is great. And he had no issues with exterior, uh, the exterior plans for environmental safety. As I've stated as well, as a trustee, I think both of our concerns have been interior walls. So if I'm on a seventh grade science, or if I'm on a seventh grade hallway, this classroom neighborhood, and a kid decides to become an active shooter in that classroom pod, our students don't have any protection. And that is my concern. That's been my concern from day one. It's not about people coming off the street and can they get in the vestibule? No, I'm talking about students and staff that are already in the building. We're talking about students that are already, or, or a person that has already penetrated the building. So then where do our students go? And I think to have glass that is not bullet resistant at all, to have, um, to be told that the student, uh, teacher would have to pull a curtain in a lockdown situation, they would have to pull the curtain across the glass. And I think about the mental capacity of, of officers. We, we talk about Uvalde and we had trained experts that could not, uh, conduct themselves at a high mental capacity. So I wonder if our teachers would have that high mental capacity in an active shooter situation to be able to pull a curtain, to be able to corral, uh, 19, 20 students and take them to another room in a hallway. So I feel like, um, I understand, um, I read over the same things you do, but I, I do think it's important to talk about those were shared spaces. So our, our cafeterias are open concepts, it's visual. Our libraries, open concept, visual. Our classroom neighborhoods have to be the one place of safety for our students. Every policy that we have in place, I worked in the district, guys, um, every, the way we tell our students and staff to move, it wouldn't work in this design. So unless we are planning on changing all of our protocols and the way we do lockdown drills, I don't see how this design is, is going to work and be effective. What I've asked the architects, um, about what the procedures would be, they said we're, we aren't there yet. So my question, I guess, well, what point will we get there? To where we would know what the procedures is? Because that's a concern for me. We talked about our kids, my kid goes to school every day too. And that's a concern for me, that the protocol might be taking him from one classroom to another classroom in a lockdown situation where it could potentially be four classrooms of students stuffed in one classroom behind nothing but a curtain. That is a concern for me. So I feel like as trustees, I just hope that we can consider that situation for our students. Not only our students that we go home to, but all the students in the district.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis, can I speak?
Oh, yeah, go for it.
And I'll, I'll give you the floor. Um, I have been, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Ochoa, for reading that. That's very helpful. Um, I think, um, in terms of, uh, one, again, point of clarification, um, we don't have policies, these are protocols for intruder drills, protocols that are set by the district. Um, we, as the board, could ask our administration to review protocols. Um, I am also aware that our teachers, staff are going to have an active shooter training. So that is something that could potentially change to your, your question because I do think, you know, we need to take a look at the protocols and updating some of that. Um, but, uh, I, so I went to, um, to go look at a campus that was, uh, based off of this concept and design. And I walked through the double-layer vestibule, which most of our campuses have, which I was very thankful for, it was great. Um, one thing that I was, um, I thought was a great safety feature, which you were, again, we're talking about the exterior of the building, but it's, it's still in the interior kind of part of the building. Because when you walk through, there's an automatic alarm that sets off if the door hasn't locked all the way. So there's an alarm that goes off and alerts someone if the door is not locked. So kid walks through, door doesn't lock all the way, alarm goes off because it's supposed to be locked. So I think that is a safety feature that would have prevented, uh, atrocities. Um, the second thing that I was struck by was the visibility for administration on the campus to be able to see and have eyes on students. Clear lines of sight in the hall, there was no place to hide in terms of the stairwell, any of that, there was no place to hide. So I was, I was, I was also struck by that. Um, obviously, the, um, doors that Mr. Davis was talking about that can section off, um, classrooms, not classrooms, sorry, uh, areas of the school, which also I can see from a school administration standpoint would be super helpful in helping control. Um, uh, this particular principal had said that there was, they had a protest and they were able to contain and control it without a able to contain and control it without other kids coming in. So I'm thinking for our campus also, that would be something that would be really useful in the day-to-day procedures. I went through the classroom area, and when I walked through the classroom area, because I am not, I need to see it, I need to be convinced, I need to really see kind of what's going on, what does it look like, what does it feel like, what is this? You know, I'm going with kind of my teacher hat on, so to speak, metaphorically. I walked in and I was surprised that there wasn't as much glass as I really, as I thought from the design. So the glass looks, so the glass window from ceiling to floor is actually probably about the size of a door, next to the door, so it'd be considered kind of like a sky. What you would see on the, yeah, it would be a, the door, and then another glass window, the section of the door, and then the rest was a wall. And then on other classrooms, it was like a, a door with what would be kind of like a window in the building, and then it had the half-wall, and then it had the wall for the rest of it. There was one classroom that had a flexible learning space, because that was something in looking in the design that I was really concerned about, because I thought this flexible learning space, what does this look like? What does this, you know, feel like? In concept, it seems great. As a, as an educator, it seems great, because there's so much that you can do and use that with. So I can see how that would be very valuable for independent work, how that would be valuable for differentiated instruction, how that would be really valuable for a teacher, even for motivation. I was also very thankful that at the entrance to these academic classrooms, there was a room that was almost a 360-degree view that had teacher workspace. So teachers who are not engaged in teaching a lesson, literally you walk through, and there's that teacher workroom right there that has high visibility, eyes on every class student that comes in. And that was on both sections of the actual academic kind of hall. So you had the teacher workroom on one that had almost a 360 visibility, and then you had an office that was set up kind of the same for the assistant principal and the counselor. So I walked to the top hall, and I thought, okay, it's not as much glass, they have curtains. A lot of our teachers use card or construction paper to cover their window on intruder drills. And currently. Again, there was a difference when you walked on the top floor, which were the academic, where the academics was, was held in academic classrooms, and then when you went down to the workout room, that was all center block, there was a definite feeling, there was a difference. And I was like, okay, I get, I get the feeling. I get, I get what the design is meant and intended to do. But with that said, there is, as members of the board, we are, have a fiduciary responsibility for this budget. And I think that we've got to know, there are so many questions in terms of budget. We would actually be throwing two years of design input out the window and the money associated with that. It, which is, you know, I just think there is a place where we need to have more information. I didn't have, didn't see this letter, I don't, I, I don't, I do think that our lane as a school district is education. That's our main, obviously keeping kids safe, but we are here as a school district, one of our main focuses is education and making sure that our kids are educated. So I think that is also something to take into consideration.
President Cordwick?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
A couple of things. Yes, education is certainly our first priority. It's, otherwise, we would be, we would be building a juvenile detention center if safety was our first priority. We must build a space conducive for learning that is safe. I will fire architects, I will fire subs, I have fired employees if we don't do it right. I have no problem throwing out money if we feel like the path that we're on is unsafe. I, I don't mind doing that. I don't feel like the plan that we have is unsafe. I, I frankly don't. I don't think any of us did for a long time. I, I do believe that significant work has gone into, including thinking through safety issues into this plan. I would prefer that we either make a motion to table this, or that we make a motion to vote on this, because we-
Point of clarification, the motion has already been made to table this discussion. We were waiting on a second and a vote.
A second.
Hold on one second. Let's do a little point of order and make sure that we have all of the motions in. Okay, so let's go through our first motion, which Mr. Davis had said. He had made a motion to table the amendment, the-
The original motion.
The original motion, sorry. To table the, oh, yes, he did, he made a motion. Okay, so sorry, he, sorry, one second.
The original motion to change the material.
Sorry, can I ask your expertise again? We have an amendment that's been first and seconded on the design.
A motion.
A motion, sorry. A motion that's been first and, huh? We have a pending motion. Will the motion to table it disregard that motion, or do we have to take a vote on that motion?
The motion to table-
Perfect.
Motion to table-
On the floor. Perfect, thank you. I just had a point of clarification. Thank you so much.
Madam President, I just want to give one urge again to the trustees to table this item. Please, let's table this.
Yes, we have a first, we have a motion to table it, which trumps the amendment motion that has been first and seconded, and now we have, who seconded that?
Second.
You second, or Grant second? Mr. Gillery, thank you. Mr. Gillery seconded that emotion. That mo, that agenda item will be tabled until our next-
No, we, we're, we're voting.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, we have to vote. Can we entertain, is there any further discussion? Great. Let's go ahead and inter, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion fails. So then we'll take up our original motion. The emotion-
We'll need a second.
It already has one. It already has a second, so-
Madam President.
One sec, one second, one second. Thank you so much. I want to give everyone the floor. This is not our typical parliamentary procedure in the amendment, all of this, so this is, feels to me a little bit fumbly. I want to make sure that we are doing the proper board operating procedures. So what that does is that goes and it puts- The original amendment back on the table because we have a first and a second motion. We can open up the floor for discussion, or, yeah.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
I would just say, we, we've done a lot of discussion tonight about what our obligations are as trustees. It's very disheartening to hear the trustees say that they don't have the information that they need, and they have so many questions, and they need so many points of clarification throughout the night, and for us not to table this discussion, I think is a, is, is outside of the line of our duties as trustees. If you don't have the information, you gather it, because our community entrusted us to make those decisions. So I, I will express that I feel like as a board, if we did not feel like as a cohesive body that we were prepared, we should have tabled this discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you, Mr. Davis. Sorry, I was trying to see after something had been seconded and voted on. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any other discussion on the amendment design development? Sorry, that's not it. Is this amended?
That's it, but I didn't get it verbatim. It's Mr. Davis's original motion to amend the design development, and I've captured most of the words there.
Build a wall to separate the entire hallway.
Do we have somebody that's, sorry, Madam President, do we have someone that scribes for us, or do we have someone who has the motion to be read again? I've read it several times.
Thank you, Monica.
Carry the motion to table the law. The wall, the law, the law, the law.
Thank you.
So that's the amendment that is on the floor. It has been made, it's been motioned, it's been seconded, and now we're having discussion. I, I don't, I don't know what much else I could say to the board. I am shocked to hear that board members, after expressing throughout the night, that they did not have adequate time to review the information that had been presented, and that they had questions about the information that would be presented, that we would be voting on an amendment to the design without having all of those questions answered and without all, having all of the information that has been discussed tonight in front of us.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I think-
Question for me.
I was, or was it, who was first? Mr. Gillery? Go ahead.
I have some questions for Peter, if you would. Just from the information that was given from, from Commander Wallace, our protocols that we have in place, our procedures that we have in place, if there was an incident that happened at one of these campuses, I know there's a $27 billion lawsuit against the school board, against the city of Uvalde, against the police department, and against the district. With the information that was given, and the information from our own guiding policies from the Texas, here we go, Texas Resource Center that we have, who is liable, who's responsible? Because that's, that's what I'm looking at as well, is for us protecting the district, protecting the board, protecting the students. Where's the liability lie on an incident like that, if it was to happen on, on one of these campuses, with the information that has come out?
My wife frequently tells me, when I start answering a question like that, that I should really stop talking sooner, because people don't want to know that much about it, because that's a law school exam question, Keith. I mean, I could spend a full hour up here answering it. I don't think the board wants that. Understand that, that whether or not a school district can be held liable, and I'm just going to use generically the description, when something bad happens, without regard to whether it's an active shooter incident, whether it's a kid being attacked by another student on campus, okay, but not a shooting, a staff member doing something inappropriate with a student, that is a very, very complicated analysis that heavily depends on the facts of exactly what happened. So it's always going to be driven by exactly what the facts are. Uvalde is a horrific set of facts for all those folks involved. And where the liability fall out on that ultimately, I think it's going to be very difficult to hold the school district liable, even in that context, because under Texas law, Texas law, not federal law, Texas law, school districts and you as board members have immunity from liability broadly and generally, and the only real exception to that, as far as negligence, tort claims, is for injury or death arising out of the use or operation of a motor vehicle. As one of the local plaintiffs lawyers so eloquently put it a number of years ago, said, "I don't know why school districts need insurance, they're not liable unless you hit them with the school bus." That's not far from being accurate. So whether the school district could ultimately be held liable because, Waco ISD specifically, because you had an active shooter situation, it's, it's going to depend on the facts, but the starting premises is going to be, under state law, the district's not liable for that, right? And you as board members are not liable for that. The, the catch there potentially is liability under federal law. Liability under federal law, and there's a number of United States Supreme Court cases, and then lower courts that have tried to flesh this out, but it's basically, somebody's got to show that the district at the board level knew of the facts that were problematic and were deliberately indifferent, consciously indifferent, just didn't do anything to stop it from happening. The, the problem there is, is of course, when you start talking about the criminal conduct of someone, the way this has come up in school districts have potentially been held liable, is when you've got, and y'all, you ask the question-
So foreseeability, a piece of that?
Excuse me?
Like, you know, foreseeing it, like we talked about-
Foreseeability is, that's a negligence concept. It's got nothing to do with the federal basis, right? The federal basis is, is all tied ultimately to your protections that we all have-
Like Fourteenth Amendment.
Situation. It's not foreseeability there, right? It's, it's not, it's not a negligence concept at all. And, and the example I was going to give is, and this one comes up unfortunately all too frequently, where a school district has an employee, that employee is engaging in improper sexual contact with a student. That's real bad. We all know that's real bad. If that happens only one time, you can't hold the school district liable for it. It's when it happens over and over and over again, and there is enough going on, that the principal at the campus knows about it and doesn't do anything about it, that the assistant soup knows about it, doesn't do anything about it, the superintendent knows about it, and it happened, and there's enough evidence there to show that, and i, it's incredibly, it's an incredibly high bar under federal law to get there. It's not that it can't happen, but it's really, really difficult. And I would just tell you, in these kinds of situations we're talking about, I, I think under Texas law, it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to get there, and under federal law, it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to get there, in terms of holding a school district liable on a basis that you didn't do what you should have done with regard to school design, right? I think that's going to be a very, very, I, I don't know that you can ever get there. And, and of course, the other issue then becomes, if you're going to talk about fiduciary duty and responsibility, in all the schools we've got all across the state of Texas that don't have anywhere near the safety features that if the board doesn't do anything, that these three schools will have, right? So, and, and just like Uvalde, I mean, that's a very, very old school. And, and are you going to then say, well, the school district's got an obligation to make all those really old schools be as safe as a new Carver, a new Tennessean, a new Waco High? You don't have the money to do it. So that's part of the issue and problem. And I would just tell you that absent a very specific set of facts that you're trying to analyze as far as whether there's liability or not, I've come back to the baseline, school districts under- districts under Texas law, use or operation of a motor vehicle, other than that, immunity from liability for personal injury and death claims. And under federal law, it's basically that conscious deliberate indifference. That's, to hold the board, to hold, in order to hold the district liable for that, you've got to be able to show that the board was consciously and deliberately indifferent. And you all see what's going on now, you see the process you've gone through, and whatever decision the board ultimately makes, I think it's going to be hard to argue that you've been deliberately and consciously indifferent about the safety of the students. You hadn't been. You might have a disagreement about what is the safer design, I appreciate that, but that doesn't mean you're deliberately indifferent. Does that help?
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for. If that answers the question or not, but.
What I was looking at was the lawsuit, and I saw that the city was named in it, the city council was named in it, the.
City council.
And then I saw the school board and the district was named in it.
Always keep in mind, one of the things that, as you can probably appreciate, I get asked by lots of people in lots of different contexts, and the question always comes, "Well, can I get sued for that?" And I'm always delighted to say, "Absolutely, you can get sued for that." Because there is nobody that's the gatekeeper down at the courthouse. We could file a lawsuit tomorrow and could sue the governor of Texas, the president of the United States. Doesn't mean that the suit would ever go anywhere, but we can file that suit tomorrow and make all kinds of allegations in it. So the question is not, can we get sued for it? You asked the question appropriately in the first instance, Keith. What's our real liability exposure? And I think that heavily, heavily depends on the facts, but broadly and generally, I think the district's liability exposure, when we're talking about this area, i.e., is our school design safe or not, is going to be very, very hard to ever hold this district or any district liable for something bad that happens as a result of that, when you've gone through the kind of process this district has gone through.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Gilley. I mean, Mr.
A question for O'Connell Roberts to present us the designs again. We didn't, we never have gotten to that yet. I'm interested to see, because through the designs, it doesn't look like a small part of the wall next to the doors. In the designs that I've seen, through our discussion with Commander Wallace, we had extensive questions about those walls, and it was never mentioned, even before, at our last recorded board meeting as well, I asked those same questions, and I did again with Commander Wallace, and we were never told that this was a small piece of glass that would be next, that's the size of a door. And then also, if you guys can speak about what level of protection students will have in a classroom in an active shooter situation, not from the outside, not environmental protections, but if an active shooter is in a neighborhood classroom, what would be the procedure, what would be the protocol, and what protections would students have in that classroom neighborhood, where the active shooter is? Not across the campus, but if I'm on the science wing and the active shooter starts shooting in the science wing, what protections do I have as a student or a teacher?
Mr. Sursinger.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening again. If you will pull up the Carver Middle School presentation. So I'll jump to that one here as we move forward, but really want to start off, and I'll say broad, big picture, and some of the themes have been talked here, is when we talk about school design, it is about a comprehensive approach to the design. We go through a stakeholder process. This really started in the bond planning process, when we talked about 21st century learning environment, when we talked about what these facilities want to do for our students, when we talk about not only reading, writing, and arithmetic, but we talk about the seven Cs, like communication, collaboration. It's about creating environments about trust and empowerment. We're trying to prepare our students for college career readiness, college career military readiness along the way and the future that that supports. We, of course, are weaving safety along with technology, theater design, all types of elements as we go throughout the entire process. That is the 400-plus pages of information, probably 150 meetings with several hundred people throughout the district, including police individuals, safety officials, along with the expertise of our design team. So that's not only the 70 years of history, 70 years of corporate history for us, the 20-plus years of history I have. We have firms that have police officers formed, police officers on staff, ultimately trying to bring best practices across the industry about, throughout these facets of a design to bear for Waco ISD. We are thinking about the future. How do we support students in five years, 10 years, 50 years down the road? So through the design process, and I'm going to, I'm going to start with Carver Middle School, is we started the process, and again, during the bond planning process, we talk overall about the size and dollars of the facility. In schematic design, we start talking about the parts and pieces. So that was the first step, very similar to the images that you see here on the screen that were brought to the board, that talk about the adjacencies, the site design and the adjacency of the elements, getting into the quality of the space and the vision of the space. So here at the site plan, you see J.J. Flewellen at the south end of the site, that would be the main existing drive. The green boundary ultimately represents the approximately 15 acres on the site, that is where the school formerly stood. It was demolished here at the beginning of the year. We really start the design process thinking about access to the school from parent drop-off, parent pickup. So right now, individuals would enter in the site along the right side of the site. You would have then the parent drop-off loop that could rotate around, queue up parents. We have parent visitor drop-off there on the front. The goal is to keep the public within the front edge of the facility. The red arrow identifies the single point of entry, that is our secure entry into the facility. And then as we look, this is really then tied in around with a perimeter fence overall to make sure that we identify that first layer, that first barrier of what's approaching. There is, as we talk about Set Ed, we talk about visual observation. You can see from the front door inside the facility to the parking lot, individuals approaching to know who's coming before they even get into the check-in process.
I have a question. When you said the one point of entry, does that mean there's no other exterior doors or that those doors would be locked at all times?
The idea is that they would be locked down. As we talk about the layers and aspects of code, or of building design, we also have to bring into building code. So not only do we have to think about the active shooter, that has been a lot of the discussion tonight, we have to think about fire egress as well. So how do we get kids out of the building if there were an event outside? So we are weighing multiple things as we move forward, and as I mentioned before, it is about the balance of those elements. You know, that this is a school first, we are trying to educate our students, then how do we wrap these other things to create that safe environment within the school?
I think why I was asking that question is because the Carver that burned down had a similar design as far as we could see out into the parking lot from the front office. You got buzzed in, you couldn't just walk through the doors at Carver. So I understand the exterior safety, I'm just wondering, what is the interior safety? Because I think we've talked a lot about tonight, the discussion was interior classroom walls, and we've talked a lot about the exterior protections. So I wanted to know, because that's pretty standard, from my understanding, that we have one main point of entrance, all the other exterior doors should be locked, people get buzzed in at all the schools I've been to at Waco ISD. So I want to know about interior classroom neighborhoods.
So you asked about the design, so my goal was to talk about the overall design. And so as we talk about security amongst all the other things, it is about that layered design. Because as you do look at the history of events, it is about individuals coming into the facility and how do we slow them down? So the goal is, even at the site level, we're thinking about it from day one, to create the safest and best practice within the facility. It does start at the site between, and thinking about as individuals in the building, coming to the building, how are you seeing them, how are you observing them, how are you detecting a threat that could potentially be there?
And I definitely understand that. I think that's great. I think it's safe. I think it's a thought-out design. My question again, if they're in the school, if they have penetrated our one access point, we've buzzed them in because they're a student or a faculty or a substitute or whoever, the various people, maintenance men who come on campus, if they've gotten past the point from the exterior protections and they're in a classroom neighborhood, what protections do we have in the classroom neighborhood? If they, I understand that we have a layered protection, I understand if someone comes off J.J. Flewellen, it would be hard for them to get in, but if they are already inside Carver, what are their protections?
So as, I can go deeper into the plan to address the specific question. If you've defeated all the layers of security, you've defeated all the layers of security. That isn't a challenge.
If you're in the building, there's no layers of security.
That's not what I said. I said if you defeat the layers of the security, you've defeated them. Whether it's a jail, it's a hospital, it's a school, you're targeting a very specific situation that becomes almost impossible to prevent, rather than many of the facilities you get into a jail where you have to create individual components. That is not conducive, it is against the goals, every other goal that we've talked about throughout the design process, it prevents that from occurring.
So collaborative spaces can only happen in classroom neighborhoods that are designed with this glass layout that we have currently? That's the only way to have a collaborative space or have shared learning areas? I'm just wondering.
You're asking two different questions.
So my first question, just to clarify, my first question was, what are the protections if someone is already in the building in a classroom neighborhood? I asked, what are the protections that are there for our students? Then in my second question, you said that if we change the design, it would go against all of the other things that we're looking forward to, the shared spaces, the collaboration. And my other, my second question is, is the only way to have collaborative spaces for our teachers to work and do small groups, is this design the only thing, only way that that's possible?
So collaborative spaces work best when you have visual observation, you build that trust and that experience between the teacher and the student, allowing them to flow in and out of the classroom, and is best augmented in that way to maximize the use. So if the goal is 21st century learning to support communication, collaboration, this is the best practice. And so that is where we're looking at, again, weighing all these options, that these things are coming together, that what we are seeing is the best practice to support collaboration, to support safety and security within the design.
But that's not the only design that could allow for collaborative spaces.
There's, we can, we can turn and Waco High School approached design and collaboration in a similar way, but it is a different design.
Okay. My next question, 21st century schools, I'm seeing a lot of schools getting built, I'm seeing neighboring districts build wings on, and they don't have similar designs to what we're proposing here. So are those what you consider, those not 21st century learning environments? Are they not collaborative spaces? Are they not up to standard? That's a question. That's my question.
I don't know the specific facility is, when we, the facility that we've designed here thinks about collaboration amongst the disciplines, amongst the grade levels, amongst the various areas of the building, inside and out. So those are the themes that we talk about, and they are applied in a unique way to every district to meet their specific needs. Some districts opt not to have that.
President Quarterwick?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
We have to name a really terrible and ugly thing. If somebody is in a classroom with a weapon, if somebody is in a hall with a weapon, we cannot prevent, to the degree that we would want to prevent, from traumatic things from happening. If a person is in a hallway, whether or not there are glass walls or not, and there are people in the hallway, we cannot prevent that from happening. There was, just a second. There were, there were hallways in the Uvalde, and I hate representing it because everything that could go wrong went wrong there. Every bit of negligence that you could have was broken. But there was a student inside of a classroom that was fully protected, who killed lots of people, and the policeman outside that door could not see into that classroom. And if they could have seen into that classroom, would have prevented a massacre from happening to an even greater degree an hour earlier. They did not have any sightlines in that circumstance, and because they didn't have any sightlines, they decided to retreat, and they decided to use it as a negotiation practice versus a save the student process. So sightlines can be a really, really good thing. Seeing somebody coming can be a really, really good thing. But the terrible thing that we must admit is if there is a person, a student, a teacher, an employee, whatever it is, that has a weapon in the classroom, we've lost a lot. And it will be a traumatic event. The reason that we layer is to try to prevent that absolutely as much as possible. But if there is a person in the school with a weapon, there will be traumatic things happening that day. There will be people that don't have their children the next morning. That's a broken part of our world. I'm a pastor, I'm an ordained minister, and the words that it says in scripture more than anything else is, "Do not be afraid, do not fear." And yet, I live with fear all the time. I make decisions based on fear. It's not biblical, but I want my kids to be safe. And so the reality is that sometimes walls keep us from saving kids. That happened in Uvalde. It kept us from knowing who was in there, it kept us from knowing if the students were already dead. Traumatic things are just traumatic things sometimes. And we pray, I pray regularly, that they do not happen on our campuses. But you keep asking a question, if there is a person in a hallway with a gun, they are not able to answer that we have this surefire thing, because a wall's not going to do that. I'm sorry, a wall is not going to do that. If there are kids in the hallway, they're going to shoot the kids in the hallway. If they're in a classroom, they're going to shoot the kids in the classroom. And that is a disgusting thing, but it's a reality. So we have to do everything possible that we can to prevent people from going in there. And wings shut down, there is a, this plan is extraordinary. There is a level upon level upon level of preventing people from coming into the campus without a weapon. If they get in with a weapon, it's a traumatic day. It's a traumatic day, and there's no way around that. There just is no way around it. I don't believe that a wall is going to make, it could cause as much harm as it could prevent as much harm as well.
Madam President, I would like to say, one, I keep asking the question because I haven't got an answer yet, about what protections are in there in that situation. So that's why I keep reenterating it, because I want the answer. But I would say also that I understand that we have layered protections, and I understand that if a kid or anybody is in a classroom or in a hallway and they have a gun, that it will maybe a casualty. But what I will also tell you is that I would want our kids to have somewhere to retreat to and to give our officers time to respond. I don't think it's over if a kid has a gun in a classroom or in a hallway. I do think it's something that we could do as a district to protect our kids, and if they happen to already have the gun on campus, I don't think we throw up our arms and begin to pray. So I just want to, I want an answer to that question about if, in our interior, in our classroom neighborhoods, what protection is in there? Because if I'm thinking about a traditional school, and I'm not going to get into what happened at Uvalde, because I don't think we know the specifics, but we do know the city and the school district is being sued right now, because doors were not locked and certain protocols were not in place and were not followed how they should be. But I will say, in that same situation in Uvalde, the attacker had to get in those classrooms. In our current design, they would not have to enter any of the classrooms. They could shoot directly through the glass. They could shoot directly through the glass. It's not, correct me if I'm wrong, would it, is it ballistic protection on the glass that are in classroom neighborhoods?
Okay. I thank you so much, Mr. Davis. I'm going to go ahead and take that one, Mr. Sursinger.
I'm sorry, President Quarterwick, I asked the question as a trustee to the architect, so I would want the architects to answer. Then if you have a comment, you can make it after the architects answer.
That I will go ahead and let you, let Mr. Sursinger answer, or Kyle, and then I could go ahead and state my thing. So either Kyle or Jared, whoever feels comfortable.
I would prefer Jared to answer the question. That's who I asked the question to.
Davis is asking specifically for you, Jared.
The design approved by the Board of Trustees does not include ballistic protection at the classroom walls. So a question.
So, one second, I'm not done. So in a situation, this is my question again, if I'm in a classroom neighborhood and I'm an active shooter and I begin to shoot, is there any protections in the classroom neighborhood? Is it an area that the kids could retreat to? And what would be the procedures for that situation? Are we saying that if, from. Are we saying that if, from trustee Grant, if a shooter is already in the building, do we, do we just pray the best happens? Or what happens in that situation specifically? If a student is an active shooter in a classroom neighborhood, what protections are in the classroom neighborhood? If the answer is no, then the answer is none. But I want to know what protections are in the classroom neighborhoods in that situation that would protect them? Because from, I've asked this before, and the last time I was told, we were told that it was going to be 3M film on two out of eight classrooms, and that the procedure would be, at the meeting that I referred to earlier that we had with Commander Wallace. At that meeting, we were told that two of the rooms deemed safe rooms, which we all know that is no way we can guarantee 100% safety for any student. We know that. The reality is, things happen. But what we can do is have a high standard of safety. So I'm asking, in a classroom neighborhood, from my previous understanding, the 3M film on the two out of eight classrooms would be the protection in that situation. Is that correct?
That has not been discussed with the Board of Trustees.
So.
And I was told in that meeting that it wouldn't have to go for board approval, that you guys would be able to just present the new design, and it wouldn't have, it wouldn't need a board vote. So is that not correct? Is that?
We discussed that that would be a change to the project, and that would have to work through the document change management process of the, and it would come back to the board through an AEA.
Only if it, only if the contract required it to do so by cost, or so we would follow the contract at that point.
Or it didn't have to come to the board, was my point. So that's why I was bringing it up now.
Not necessarily.
Because it didn't have to come back to the board.
The cost.
Yeah.
Not gotten an official cost.
And what we said was that adding 3M material on glass wasn't necessarily a design development change, was just adding a film on a glass, and so we'd look at the price, determine if we needed to bring that back to the board or not.
And clarification, so no, no protection in the interior neighborhoods?
We have security cameras, we have the abilities, excuse me. Excuse me?
Excuse me, sir, right now is not time for public comment. This is a discussion that the board is having. Thank you, I'm so sorry. Okay, Dr. Kinkanen, please.
I forgot where I was.
We were talking about the security layers in there, in the actual classroom.
Go ahead, Jared.
So the question that was asked about ballistic protection, however, we do have other protection. We've talked about the compartments to lock down different sections of the building. There is the procedure, which I believe Kyle can speak to as well. We have locking door hardware, we have the curtains, there's procedures within turning lights out and retreating into the spaces, and then we've talked about additional layers that would be on top of that.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Izzadi.
This is a topic we all feel very passionate about. There has been a motion, there has been a second. Are we prepared to take a vote?
We are, I'll go ahead and.
Can I ask a question?
We're not.
Hold on one second, hold on, hold on one second. Yes, Mr.
I'm sorry, this may be a question for law enforcement, but this is my own personal curiosity. The 3M film on the windows, how well does that protect from rounds from an assault rifle, like Mr. Manning mentioned? So the 3M film is an impact resistant film? It is not a ballistics rated film?
Meaning?
Meaning that it.
Bullets will go through it?
It's for a hammer breaking through the space, but it would not stop in a round, an ammunition round.
Good question.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Guillory.
So with that right there, so a person that does have a weapon can walk down the hallways without ever entering their classroom and just shoot through the windows, and the bullets will not be stopped.
Can you rephrase your question?
So if a gunman or attacker with a weapon, with a gun, is on one of those pods or neighborhood classroom wings, if they're walking down the hallway, do they ever have to enter into a classroom in order to shoot? Or they can just shoot straight through the glass?
I'm unaware of any school that has continuous ballistic protection down the length of the hallway.
So a school design that has decorative brick down the hallway with reinforced doors, those are not time barriers, or those bullets can just penetrate through that brick?
So when you look at ballistics ratings, you have to look at the level of the ammunition and the round, and you judge against that. So it depends on what weapon you're talking about, then you design to that level of protection. So there are weapons that will penetrate many surfaces?
We did, we did look at the data earlier and the history of school shootings, and it did show that there is no history of a gunman blind firing through brick or through a door. They have shot through windows and have killed kids after they shot through the windows.
I can't speak to that.
I can.
Okay, yes, Mr. Gillory.
May I address that specific point? That's what happened in Uvalde. The gunman shot at the responding officers through the cinder block wall, and that's why they retreated.
I haven't.
The assertion in the commander's letter suggests that that's not one of the incidents that he reviewed.
I haven't reviewed that myself.
The, yeah, thank you, Mr. Guillory. Are you finished or you not?
I agree.
I also have discussed this, and the assault rifle would shoot through cinder block wall, wood, glass, any type of material, this assault rifle with the ammunition that had been provided, or that the assailant had would have shot through anything, any material that we would have made a school out of. Second, Uvalde would not have happened in this school design because of the layers of protection, line of sight, that happens, the alarms that are on and technology that we have on the actual doors would be automatically notified if there was a door that was unlocked or not properly locked, an alarm would go off notifying administration. There's been a first, there has been a second motion, I will entertain a vote.
President Quarterwig, I understand that the trustees might be ready to get done. I requested for us to be able to be shown the design of an interior hallway, and I've yet to see that. So I would like for us to take the time. I understand if trustees have to leave, I think you can do so, but they, I would like to see the designs of an interior hallway because we were told earlier that it would be a door sized glass insert, but that's not what I've seen on the designs that have been presented before, and that's not the discussion we've had up until today. So I would at least like to see those classroom neighborhoods. These are common spaces in the exterior, but I would love to see the classroom neighborhood illustrations.
Now, the large area in the rendering of Waco High is a view of the classroom neighborhood. You see a collaboration space.
Can you pull up the classroom neighborhoods from GW Carver?
Just hold on, let him do this, and then you can ask him a question.
But we're not answering my question.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis, I am trying to.
I have the floor. I know Robert's rules really well.
Yes, you do have the floor, but we also need to allow people who also have the floor at this point, that would be Mr. De Beer, to finish his comment, and then you ask him a question, and then he can go through. Sir?
You move forward.
Sir, this is a point of order in Robert's rules. This is not something we do. I am trying to follow our legal protocol. I understand this is an emotional topic, but we also have to give people the floor to answer questions. If there are more questions, I would like for you to ask Mr. De Beer. Mr. De Beer, if you would please continue.
This is the Carver design, the large image is a classroom wing. I want to go back to the Waco High classroom rendering for just a second because that's where this discussion first came up, was the board reviewed design development. That was the first design development for the board to approve, and I think it's helpful to review the conversation that took place at that meeting on January 27th. With a moving rendering of this classroom area paused, trustee Guillory asked Janah Duke from O'Connell Robertson, "That glass, the safety standpoint with active shooters, things like that, we teach staff and students to hide, so how does this help with that?" Ms. Duke responded, "It's a layered approach that starts from the site all the way into the campus. This building is broken up into compartments, and at each stage, a person could not get from one compartment to another. So you create zones that are capable of being safe instead of just individual rooms. That zone, this zone we are in, takes four layers you would have to get through until you could get here. It buys time, and then the other strategy of opening up and being able to see, it's hard to hide and not get caught if you're in a glass box. There's the strategy that comes from law enforcement. We do work with your local law enforcement and sit down with the plan and say, let's have the worst day of our lives. What does this look like, and how do we respond? How does the building respond?" At that point, trustee Davis asked a follow up. "I have a question. It's more on the active shooter thing. So the glass isn't bulletproof or anything. So if I'm in a pod and somebody that's an active shooter is in my pod, what do we do?" Ms. Duke responded, "You get out. You go to the next compartment. For fire aggress as well, you are not trapped in a box. That comes down to the local district policy as well, so we've worked with you guys on campus about what that looks like, and making sure we have doors in the right spot, that we have alarms in the right spot, and that it would facilitate the in-place policy for the case." Trustee Davis added, "The steps that you say you have to go through are those locked doors. It would be four locked doors that you would have to get through." Ms. Duke responded, "Yes." After that discussion, trustee Guillory moved approval of both that design and the materials, and the board joined him in voting unanimously to approve it.
Madam President, I just, I was, I had requested.
Yes.
I appreciate that overview that you just gave us, that did not answer my question, Mr. De Beer. And it just didn't answer my question, I don't understand.
Would you clarify your question for me then, trustee Davis?
The designs that we've been shown, I'm speaking with the architects as well, that were shown to Commander Wallace of GW Carver in the classroom neighborhood, is not the design that we see on the screen right now.
It is.
The design that was shown.
It was an animated rendering, but it's the same design, same classroom wing. This is a still of that rendering.
I think the stills that we were shown in the meeting, I feel like were a closer view. Either way, the point that I'm making, I appreciate you clarifying that I've been asking about these designs since the first meeting because it's been implied that I have it a couple times. The point is, we see an open classroom wall right here. We see another classroom that has floor to ceiling glass. A little bit down the way, we see two doors with glass inserts that aren't protected, and we see another wall of windows. As someone who's worked in the district in behavior, I understand all the exterior layers of protection, I understand the references to Uvalde, I understand why we're making references to Uvalde. My only concern is I think that maybe the trustees, and it seems like everybody, maybe are not understanding that I'm asking about interior. If someone's already in the schools, what is the layers of protection? And I'm being told that there are no layers of protection once someone is already in the school building, and that our kids, if they're in a pod, are told to retreat. We can shake our head, but that's what you just read from our meeting, that they told us that our kids would need to retreat out of their pod, that they're into the next pod. So my question would be, from my understanding, we're going to lock those pods down. So even though kids could leave, they wouldn't be able to enter another pod to gain safety. So where exactly are we running to? Because President Quarterwig mentioned that we have a lot of open spaces, and she was concerned that kids had nowhere to hide in our cafeterias and our libraries and these common areas. So exactly where are students retreating to? Those are the problems that I'm seeing in this design. It comes more as procedure and real life application. I'm not seeing the students that unfortunately happen to be in a pod, that somebody, if they did decide to be an active shooter or aggressor, I just think we need to provide more protection to those students. And I think that it's really unacceptable that we can say that if an active shooter is on my kids' hallway, that there will be no layers of protection and that they will be told to retreat, and there's nowhere for them to retreat to. If everything is locked down and you can't enter any of the wings, you can only leave them. So where, that would be my question. I don't know who has the answer to that, but when we're telling kids to exit the wing, exit the wing that they're on to find safety, where are they fleeing to?
They exit the classroom neighborhood, they exit the building. It's a piece of the protocol that's in place now that's not something Waco ISD invented. The last step in the standard response protocol that the I Love You Guys Foundation outlines for a lockdown is prepare to evade and defend its evasion.
So our students will need to exit the building completely in an active shooter situation. We would direct our students and teachers from whatever pod it started on for them all to exit out of their pod and into the parking lot.
To exit away from where the shooter is? Is the immediate concern to evade the shooter?
Would be the parking lot or the track area.
Eventually, yes. Every active shooter incident that you've seen on the news, the building is evacuated as quickly as possible.
One of the things that she pointed out.
Point of order.
Whoa, 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 that's my, that's my, that's my line. Mr. Davis, I was going to give you the floor.
I was the secretary of the board.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Yes, you can continue, Mr. Grant, if we just hold on one second. Okay, yes, hold on, hold on one second. We'll let Mr. Davis continue his question.
Yeah, it's a question, it's a question. So after they retreat, so our students with disabilities, our students who have limited mobility, how does this plan work for them? What do they do? Because in most situations that I've seen where kids are being exited, it's not normally before law enforcement arrives. So I'm wondering if law enforcement haven't arrived and our kids and students are running through the hallways to find an exit, and then they get outside and the police haven't arrived, are we running into the shooter? That would be my question, because the shooter will also have access to leave whatever wing that they're on, they wouldn't be locked in that area. I'm almost done. So I just wanted to know, what is the layer of protection that our students have once they exit the building? Is it a specific place that is always guarded with law enforcement? Is it a bunker area, or is it just, we pray that between the time they leave the classroom neighborhood and get outside, that law enforcement has arrived?
So to be clear, first, they're going away from the shooter, not towards the shooter. But secondly, all of the campuses we're talking about have Waco ISD police officers stationed at them who would intervene to stop the shooting. All of our officers are alert trained. In fact, we have four certified alert trainers on our police department staff. Just over the summer, they prepared for that scenario. That's the location, if you're talking about where campuses are guarded, it's our officers that are located at those campuses.
So it's our specific spots that students would retreat to that would have an officer? So would the officer be at that spot, or would they be in the building?
The officer will engage the shooter.
Okay. And the alert training that you talked about, is that the same alert training that Commander Wallace had mentioned, or is that a different set of trainings?
So I think Commander Wallace has referenced maybe about four different trainings in his letter, including SEP TED, CRAZE, an earlier version of active shooter training. The alert training is the gold standard, and it's consistent across law enforcement agencies. The idea behind the alert training is that it doesn't matter if you're from the Waco ISD Police Department and the McLinnan County Sheriff's Department, you've all had the same training. So when you engage in an event at a location, you minimize the risk for friendly fire incidents, but also people know how to work together regardless of whether or not they're from the same agency.
Okay, Mr. Grant.
Just one thing, in the many questions that we asked at that first meeting that was cited earlier, one of the things that she walked us through was the schematic, the overview of all the different hallways. In her layering, it didn't just stop at the door. It wasn't just once the person got in the door, they were free and clear to go wherever they wanted. There was an instantaneous button push that each wing was instantly locked down, and so whoever it is would be sequestered into a small spot. They don't have free run of the whole place. There is video surveillance through the whole time. If a door needs to be unlocked or moved, then people could be moved in a direction away from the deal. So it's not a matter of once they get into the door, that. So it's not a matter of, once they get into the door, that it's free game anywhere you go. There are places that break down with instantaneous door locks with one push of a button, and one campus becomes many different spaces that are protected from one individual.
Point of clarification, Madam President. You won't be able to exit. They would be able to exit.
Yeah, they will be able to, yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Guillory.
I want to go back and respond to your, when you went back and did the review of when I did approve that design. If you go back and you listen to the dialogue that we had right there, she said, when I asked specifically the same question, I asked Jared, "Where do our students go if they're in that classroom and there's a shooting that takes place?" And she said that they can escape to a local compartment. That made it sound like that they can leave that classroom and go into a safe space, and that's just not true.
She was asking a question about the compartmentalization on the screen. This is the floor plan for Carver. Waco High's a larger scale, but it's similar. And she said, "You go out, you go to the next compartment. The compartments, as she described them, as I just reread, are those classroom neighborhood areas."
But I asked about the classroom when we were talking in that conversation, and she made it sound like they can leave out of that classroom and escape into a compartment. And that's right off the classroom, and that's not what, that's not true. And that's why I came back to this design and asked Jared the same question. And Jared stated, "There's nowhere for them to go." That's the answer she should have given at that time when I asked her the same question, because there is nowhere for them to go.
I think her answer was direct and truthful. It described the design you see on the screen.
Okay, Mr. Guillory, do you have any more? Are you okay? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Say aye.
Okay. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. That is it. And with that, Ms., we have announcements. Yes, thank you for announcements.
On September 1st, we'll celebrate our summer graduates in a ceremony at University High School. That event kicks off that evening at 6:00 PM, and we're excited to have about 50 graduates who will be participating in that ceremony. As final IGC committees are being carried out, that number may grow a little bit. And then, of course, on September 5th, our campuses and offices are closed in observance of Labor Day.
Also, could you let us know if you're planning to attend on September 1st, the summer graduation? Staff is planning to wear regalia again, so we'll have your robes for you if you're attending. So please, I think it starts at, just email Monica or tell her tonight if you think you'll be there. And it starts at six, did you say it started at 6:30? So if you could be there a little bit early, I'll, I didn't, Kyle, did you say that started at 6:30?
At 6:00.
6:00, so be there at 5:30 so we can get you suited up.
Okay, thank you so much. And with that, we're adjourned.